Western Board of Trustees to order. I'll raise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the first and most precious of all.
Thank you all. What a beautiful day. Spring.
Yeah, I can't read.
Technically at four twenty-four. I read all about it this morning when I couldn't sleep anymore. So how about a roll call? Aaron or Pam?
Yeah.
Pam, alright.
Maloney.
Here.
Hermeling.
Here.
Cronin.
Here.
Feeny.
Here.
Hardinger is excused. Wyland. Oh, I'm sorry.
Are you teasing? You're teasing.
We're not. Hardinger.
Here.
Wyland is excused. Sagami.
Here.
Yep, I saw it pushing on. Public comments at this time, I did get during during this portion, Pam, you want this read or now at public comment?
Um, he didn't specify, but you can, I think you could do it now.
Yeah, I'll do him now. Then I have another one here from Jim Penasolt. Um, various amounts, but I think, Jim, you want to talk during the agenda items, right?
Yes.
Okay, okay, good. So we'll just put that to the side. Um, under public comments, I'll just read this here. We have a Scott Berger wrote something for the fireworks portion. Uh, let's see, he's out of state and unable to attend today's village board meeting in person. I would like my email read in public comments. I urge the board, if I'd read that, then I would have known when to read it. I urge the board to support a joint effort with all Wausau Metro municipalities to fund the Fourth of July fireworks at the Wausau Downtown Airport. The Wausau Metro area has lacked a good Independence Day fireworks display slash celebration for decades. This is a chance for us to come together as a community and celebrate American values and patriotism. This is something that should be done annually. Thank you for your consideration. Scott Berger, one zero one zero seven, Standing Oak Drive, Weston, Wisconsin, five four four seven six. So noted. And let's see. Anything else on public comments? Going twice. Anything else on public comments? Anybody online? Aaron. No one? No hands up? Okay, right. Alright, moving on to minutes from the previous meetings, we have a two twenty twenty twenty-three Board of Trustees meeting and two six twenty twenty-three Joint Human Resources Committee and Board of Trustees meeting. What is your pleasure?
Move to acknowledge items four and five concurrently.
By Feeny.
Second.
Second by Hermeling. Anything else on the discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? So carry. Thank you. Reports minutes from boards, committees and commissions.
Move to acknowledge items nine, eleven and fifteen concurrently.
Motion by Feeny.
Second.
Second by Cronin. Anything else to be discussed? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? So carry. Reports from departments. Administrator.
Um, just, uh, I guess mention what was in my report. We will be having an open house on May thirteenth. There's a draft postcard that's been put up, put together and we'll be sending that out to a list of of possible attendees and village residents as a whole, I guess. Um, that should be by the end of the week, early next week. Um, so May thirteenth is a Saturday. The hours we're gonna list as ten to two. I think that was what was discussed last time. Um, there was a pre-bid meeting for the public safety building exterior uh, last Thursday. We had three contractors in attendance, two were general contractors, one was a, I believe would be a more of a subcontractor. Uh, the bid opened for that, that was April fourth. Um, I guess those maybe are the only items I had of note in there. Um, for our two closed session items tonight, Matt Edie had to go in for emergency surgery today.
Oh.
So I don't know if we want to do that later or not. I guess we can decide later.
Yeah, we'll go in and see what we find. Is he okay?
Uh, he should be.
Okay.
Hopefully it's a routine thing, but you know.
I'm sure he doesn't want to.
Taking care of everybody.
Yeah, we have a silver public here we have here. Good luck to you, Matt. Alright, uh, hearing anything else? Any questions for the administrator? Hearing none. Thank you, Keith. Uh, clerk?
Nothing more than what's in my report.
Okay. Any questions? Uh, for those watching, uh, what for in-person absentee voting, what do they need to bring?
Uh, photo ID. And that starts tomorrow through the rest of the week and all next week. So the only thing that they would need to bring is their photo ID.
Thank you.
Eight to five, right? Eight to four?
Uh, eight thirty to four. And next Friday, the thirty-first, it's eight thirty to five.
If you, and so is that like legal? But if you have a key, you can get in at eight o'clock.
I can be ordered.
No? Okay, alright, never mind. Alright, never mind. Okay, anything else for Pam? No? Uh, finance?
Nothing to add.
Nothing to add? Any questions? Thank you. Uh, fire any MS?
I got a report in the packet, a couple little things. We do have a one full-time captain position that is currently open. Um, that is posted. We have, we've had four applicants so far. Two of the four are qualified. Um, one internal and one external are the two that are qualified for the position. Um, that posting ends Friday at noon and then we will be doing interviews for that in the near future here. And then myself and Deputy Chief Lang attended um uh, the Fire EMS Lobby Day in Madison at the Capitol last Wednesday. Um, so we spent the entire day down there, um, met with some local senators and representatives. The big conversation was around the shared revenue and changes to that, hopefully some extra money coming our way, so. Yet to be determined, but there seemed to be, uh, for the most part, there seemed to be some fairly good support.
Okay. Good. Any questions for Chief? Uh, alright, thank you, Josh. Uh, let's see. Jennifer, planning and development?
Do you want to do parks and parks first?
Yeah, I might as well. How about Sean?
So I did have a report in the packet. The only thing I didn't really report on is currently ongoing is we are accepting applications for seasonal summer help for parks. And we have four applicants so far. We have three positions to build and they would be all new seasonals this year as we lost our fourth and fifth year seasonals from last year.
Okay.
Both currently have full-time jobs. So, um, we have three high school age students and an older individual that applied so far, so hopefully we can get some quality candidates out of it and, you know, make our summer go smoother.
Yep, how about lifeguards?
Lifeguards, um, I've been in contact with the Y and as far as what I've heard, staffing is good right now.
Okay, good.
We've been working on organizing the schedule for training, uh, preseason rentals. We have two of those set up already. Uh, so, I mean, it's coming faster than I think.
Yeah.
So.
Wish you like a deal like today.
Yeah, so, um, but yeah, we should be all ready to go with it.
Good. Thank you. Any questions? Okay, now Jen's turn.
I have a report in there. I don't have anything additional unless you have questions on anything.
Okay, any questions? Okay, no? Alright, thank you. Public Works, Aaron. Or what?
Police.
Ooh.
Police.
Yeah, I know, just fooling around. John, you want to take a step up at the podium, John? Go ahead. No, John's filling in for Chief Schultz. He's down in Florida, I believe, right? Yep.
Yeah, we're just working on recruitment. Um, you have currently three vacancies and uh, fourth expected in April. Been reaching out to tech schools and universities to work on recruiting part of it. Chief was able to get a grant for sign-on bonuses. We're trying to work that into the hiring process. Calls for service are still going up, thirteen hundred calls for the village in February, which is almost identical to January, so lots of calls for service and down four spots.
Okay, is that one or two to the county? One?
Two to the county.
Oh, two now?
Retirements.
Right.
We also have someone on like duty right now, so.
Yeah. And you got one that's still being certified, right?
Yep.
Or we lost the other one?
Lost the other one, got one that we're gonna sponsor to recruit.
Okay, alright. Good. You letting your hair grow out a little bit or what?
Can't get in for an appointment.
Oh, huh, imagine that. Well, you're lucky. You know, yeah, well, you notice when you don't have any hair, so. Alright, so let me see, let me see if I get in line here. I think it's Public Works, right? You Aaron's? Uh, let's go over here to Dan.
Yeah, Michael's in Arizona. I apologize. Uh, I won't be able to give you much as far as utility side of it on more streets. So, uh, I guess if you have any questions on anything that Michael had put on there, um, you can address them to me and I will get to him and get back to you.
Okay, so.
Also online if you guys have anything.
Uh, one or the other, come on, please. You put your ears back on and play with the kids. Go ahead, Michael. Do you just want to let us know that you're online?
Yeah, I'm just here if you have any questions and.
Okay.
But one item of note is the, um, there is a public information meeting with the Village of Rothschild for Weston Ave between Alderson and Birch next week, Wednesday, at Rothschild Village Hall at six o'clock, um, if anyone's interested.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Any other discussion or questions? I just do want to publicly thank Dan. Uh, two weeks ago during that heavy snowfall, Al Christiansen reached out to me on a Sunday or Saturday and, uh, the Ringo Chair and, uh, they had two, um, trucks down and another vehicle down and just was very desperate for some help. And I, I put a quick email to Dan and Keith and Michael and within seconds, Dan came back and said, I'll call him right away. Ooh, had it done. Uh, Al was extremely thankful and, uh.
Thank you, Andy. He was one of the guys that went.
Uh, thank you, Andy. Thank you.
Thanks.
He was extremely, uh, thankful. Texted back and forth a little bit and I reminded him about maybe helping us out on Nick, but didn't go that well, so. Must not have been after that long, so, no, I'm just teasing. You know, Al and I get along pretty well, so thank you very much for that, okay? Uh, technology. Now Aaron's turn? Is, are you technology? No, okay. And I'm just gonna keep going on you all night. So, um, there's a report in there, but no need unless somebody else has got it. Any question?
Nate's online and I don't.
Oh, you're online Nate?
Nope, he is. Probably not, I don't think. Um.
Okay. Is he on vacation too?
Yeah.
Okay.
Bring birthday time for, uh, everybody.
Yeah, really. Cool, we bet.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, uh, so. Do we move?
I can never remember this.
Move to acknowledge, uh, items twenty-seven, twenty-eight and twenty-nine concurrently.
By Feeny.
A second.
By Hardinger. Uh, anything on the questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Work product transmitted. February billing permits, um, one at a time, or you want to take them all?
We just did that. We just did that.
We just did February billing permits, yeah.
Well, that twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
Oh.
Concurrently.
Yeah, I thought, okay, I was off about that, sorry. Wow, gonna stay on the board here. Consent agenda. I think we want to pull a few out, don't we? Or not? Does anyone, you want to do this as a consent or do you want to pull some things out?
There was, there was one.
Thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, it wasn't really, I didn't know if we wanted to take those individually or. I don't, I don't, do we normally put?
I would, yeah, I would separate thirty-seven, thirty-nine.
Yeah, I don't think.
So the question I would ask then is when things come out of committee, do we, I, I, my thought was, yes, you just go on the consent agenda item or consent agenda. That's not what we want, I guess, then.
But, so it is a change then? It is a change?
In the past did it, but somehow we got away from it.
But how about last month?
Last month, we probably didn't.
Okay, so because it's new and, you know, maybe we, you know, I mean, having a hard enough time with this gen- agenda. So why don't we pull thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine out and, uh, what's your pleasure on the rest?
Motion to approve items thirty-one through thirty-six.
Second. Motion by Cronin, second by Feeny. On the question, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Alright, now thirty-seven, um, water sewer utility truck purchase from Menke Auto, I think was the, the bitter word. Right?
Right. So, uh, is that handy?
No, I hear Fred Mueller, he bought Fred Mueller.
Oh.
So one was, um, I thought fifty-five or fifty-seven. I think the, those fifty-five was what we were shooting for, but I think Menke came in at fifty-two.
Yeah.
Fifty-two five. Yeah, less.
Fifty-two thousand five eighty-six.
Right. Anything on the question there? Uh, to purchase the GMC utility truck from Menke for fifty-two thousand five hundred eighty-six dollars. By Feeny.
Second.
Second by Hermeling. Any more on the question? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? So carry. Thirty-eight, wells three and four, long-term PFAs, PFAS treatment design. Questions? Or you want a motion, motion to put it up?
Yeah, motion to approve.
Uh, motion by Hermeling, second, second by Feeny. Now, anything on the question?
Is this, um, I, I kind of read through this and I noticed that where, is this in anticipation of a new EPA guideline or is there an actual?
No, so currently, currently the state of Wisconsin has a seventy parts per trillion, but the EPA has been working on a a new guideline for, um, what that limit is going to be. So last week, Tuesday, they came out with their preliminary, um, ruling that it would be four parts per trillion. Those wells are well over four parts per trillion. Um, so a, any treatment system essentially would try to get us to zero, you know, a non-detect.
So they're, they're going from seventy parts to four?
Yeah, correct.
Wow.
Yeah.
Is there, I mean, is that, is that pretty much a done deal or is this gonna, I mean, is there a likelihood that, I mean, is it just a recommendation that could end up changing and it ends up being, you know, that the guideline is twenty or twenty-five parts? I'm just curious.
Let's go through the EPA. Um, and the EPA will be approving this, a standard by the end of the year. Okay, so it has to be something. We're gonna have to take out something, so I, yeah.
Yeah, I, I guess, so the DNR currently has a seventy parts per trillion. The Department of Health Services has a twenty parts per trillion and, um, you know, then the EPA has their own that they're working on. So in the state of Wisconsin, you know, we've two, we've got two set standards and then the EPA recommended. So, yeah, by the end of twenty-three, the EPA wants to have their, their number set. So, I mean, even at twenty, um, wells three and four still need the PFAS, uh, removal. Um, it's really gonna, the, the EPA ruling really is gonna impact what we end up doing with the other wells in our system, whether one and five are still okay or we're looking at future treatment there too in the years to come, but.
So, uh, Director Wodolski, is this the initial guideline that the EP, that the EPA is using to uh, solicit public comments or is this the, or is this the final, uh, or is this the final ruling that they're uh, that they're going to enforce?
Yeah, so it's not the final ruling. It's something that they're proposing, although, you know, I think it was six months ago, they proposed zero, you know, a non-detect, um, a, as the, as the condition. So, um, you know, the, the leniency is they've gone from zero to four. So, I guess I don't see it being much different, um, moving forward, e- even if, even if they went to ten or twenty. We're still, we're still gonna need treatment, yeah.
Hey, Michael, um, has the EPA or DNR outlined how exactly we're supposed to get from seventy to four?
So, yeah, so that's the, the treatment, the PFAS removal. So, uh, last April, when we first started testing for PFAS, you know, we, we approved the bench test, kind of the preliminary finding, you know, we have well four is up and running right now with a, with a temporary treatment system. You know, it's not meant to be a full-scale, long-term, but we, we put up there so that well four could get back up and running. And, you know, that, you know, our raw water readings, I think the last one was about a hundred parts per trillion in raw water, like coming out of the ground, and after treatment, it was zero. It was non-detect. So, um, you know, so we're, we're using that, you know, we'll use a granular activated carbon, um, technology, uh, to, to remove that. So, so it's possible.
So this, this contract from ACOM for design services is how to integrate that filter system into our wells?
Correct, yeah, how to upgrade the, the wells for a long-term treatment system. And part of that is, is well three has to have an iron and manganese removal system, uh, designed for it as well, which was part of our long-term master plan anyways for well three, so.
So this, this contract is for them to uh, outline how that's to happen in our wells and then put together a bid packet for it to go out to bid before we actually get to the point of us, you know, moving on it, right?
So, 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 yeah, it's the final design as well as, um, the application for the safe drinking water, uh, program for the DNR to, um, I guess request forgiveness on the, any loans for, um, the emerging contaminant funding.
Is the state or anybody else subsidizing or granting these efforts?
Yeah, so that's the part of the, the state's safe drinking water loan for, um, uh, for the emerging contaminants, you know, the PFAS treatment. So there's a, a separate pool of money for PFAS treatment and removal that we'll be applying for.
Thank you.
So the loan is, is reimbursable, if I'm hearing.
Is it, is it, it's completely reimbursable? Is that what you're saying?
Uh, they haven't determined that yet. We've had a couple of calls with DNR. I, I think some of it comes into how, how much everybody requests.
Yeah.
But, um, we will be looking for some, some, if not all, um, I, I just, I don't know what that number is at the moment.
Okay, so, sorry, last, last question, Michael. Um, is ACOM the one that we generally just always use for design services or?
For our water system, they have been, yes.
Is there anybody else that we could ask for a design? Design bid from? It's just, we, we use ACOM a lot for almost all of what we do here, so I just, I'd like to make sure every now and then to just, uh.
Change it up.
Not change it up necessarily, but at least keep them honest.
Yeah, I, I.
It's a big number for a design service. Is, is, I guess, my, my thought. So I, I don't know if we, if we've kind of reached out to anybody else other than ACOM. I, I, I see their name on almost all of our prints. So I don't know if it, uh, if it kind of caught in the market here, if there's anybody else that we could reach out to for a separate, uh, design bid.
I, I mean, I guess for future, I have no problem doing that. Um, there is a timeline of middle of June to get, uh, any applications into the DNR for the drinking water, um, program. And they, they are the ones that have worked with the temporary treatment as well as our, um, just kind of our, our SCADA design. So I think asking anybody else to do it, I don't know if anybody's gonna be able to give us a better number.
Well, yeah, ACOM does a lot of public works. They do a lot of roads and I understand they do a lot of infrastructure. It's just, um, it'd be nice to see somebody else's name occasionally or at least get an idea to make sure that we're not, uh, sole, sole awarding contracts.
Yep, no, I mean, we do work with Clark Deets, MSA, Becker Hoppy. Yeah, I mean, we don't, we don't just sole source with ACOM for everything, but.
Okay, thank you, Michael.
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor say aye.
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 Vote. So carry. Uh, just backing up from thirty-nine, I missed, uh, agenda item six, Jim. You, did you have a comment on the building committee? I'm sorry. I just looked at it and I was going, boy, we've, we've kind of far into this already and I missed, uh, the first two.
Jim, that's off by those two, Arrow Street. Um, yeah, item six, the building committee, it continues to land on our agenda, but isn't it gone? It's solved, it's still active?
Well, the building committee, I, I assumed that it would be, now, it'd be the committee that you're on and Cronin and Hardinger.
Different committee, or?
Yep, yeah, we should probably call that. Yeah, the, the building committee should be done unless it was put back on for that. Because if that, then we should put public safety building.
I can change that. I, I've just been, I have not.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm just moving it forward. Yeah, that's fine.
Just generically call it the building.
Yeah, let's just.
But it would be called a public safety building project.
Right, so let's, let's just name it that way then, so that there's no.
As chair, I know.
Yep.
Um, trustee Hardinger just felt it was prudent to go ahead with the, uh, the plans that had been developed prior.
Right.
And move ahead with that bid package and then I think your intention is to get together with the committee.
Yes, I'm sorry, I apologize, Jim. I'm sorry. Sorry. No, it's okay.
Yeah, just, just so we don't lose.
No, it's the same agenda, I know, it's been for two years, from form the.
It just for.
Four, seven, four, seven, building committee.
Right.
Right, yeah, no, we'll get that cleared up, but just from.
I can take that off.
Just for public record.
Exactly.
Best bid has been released for the exterior package. They had their walkthrough last week, um, and as soon as we get those, those back, my intent is to have the committee convene.
Together.
So that we can go through the interior project because it was much more in-depth than the exterior. Nothing really changed, aside from how we wanted and managed.
Yep.
So.
Now, uh, twenty-six? Curl is not here, so, okay, alright, that's it. Um, but you, I saw some emails and, uh, on technology, if it is, uh, on our website. So you commented on an issue and then as long as we're here, I can go back to technology. Just a quick comment from myself. I went on there and, um, awards. So I go into awards and the last award, the last event, the last thing we put on there was two thousand and eleven. So I, I, we, I know we have a, um, strategic plan coming up, but I think it should definitely be involving our, uh, website because our website is very much lacking. And, um, but to, to.
Started to update with it and made, did that a couple of weeks ago and then we're supposed to start meeting with the lady that updated, so.
Yep, so I don't, I don't know if updating is, I know it's not agenda, but I think we need a more exciting website, a website. Boring, so. There's just some things that have to be right up front, so you don't have to search for it and especially what this week's events are and stuff. I think that's what you commented on events or calendar instead of having to look for it all the time. And I think for some people, it's hard to navigate through it.
I don't think there's anybody that is actually updating that anymore because that has a function of Renee and um, Heather when Heather was here, so I'm not sure how much the community events are actually getting.
Okay, so how about just the website as a whole? Is it in, is it, is it in a strategic plan?
Would be, yes, it is. There are parts of it we need to.
Otherwise, otherwise we should just cut parts of it down, just completely eliminate it, yeah.
I thought it's.
Because it's, it's, it's just, yeah. Well, then only awards, it just stops at two and eleven like we, you know, what are we doing? So I, it's not on here, but I just, I, I just saw that it was on yours, Jim, at twenty-six, so. Uh, moving back to thirty-nine, sorry, uh, engineering design proposal process for future capital improvement projects. Your pleasure. Get it on the floor.
Motion to.
By Hermeling.
A second.
Second by Hardinger. On the discussion.
Is, um, is Jalenic from, from Machmud at Alderson, are we, I came in at the, the tail end of the Public Works meeting. Are we paving that this summer or is that kind of waiting till Greenheck's done?
Yeah. Oh, sorry, my, my thought would be we'd kind of wait until twenty twenty-four to repave that. I think that makes the most sense and just kind of let them use it as their haul road for the Greenheck Turner Center for this summer and next spring and then take care of it once they're done and we'll have to just keep patching and trying to, and keeping the rest of the road, um, closer to the junior high. Um, all, you know, Normandy Street area in passable condition.
And then, uh, Meskirk has a spur, you know, like, is that going around Arrow Bar or am I misunderstanding that?
That, that was an initial thought with the Schofield Ave corridor is we'd try to square that up with the old Costa intersection. So instead of having two T intersections, so I guess that'd be part of that design is to investigate whether that's worthwhile or we don't want to even look at that and just leave it as is, that's fine. Um, but that was something that was in the cor- corridor plan for Schofield Ave. So that'd be a part of the design process was to evaluate whether that's, uh, worth moving forward with or if we should just leave the intersections as they are.
I'm just trying to think where that, where that would come together. Would that be between the two parking lots?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, if, if that's even feasible, so that'd be years out because you'd have some, uh, home purchasing.
Correct, yes. So that'd be more unlikely, like a twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six year project.
Yeah, I don't think Meskirk can wait that long.
But you mean Fuller?
Or, uh, excuse me, Fuller, yeah.
Yeah, Fuller.
Yeah, that's pretty bad.
Yeah, it is pretty bad. Okay. So, um, what's your pleasure? We got a motion and a second. Any more in the discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Alright, ordinances, ordinance, uh, number forty-one, ordinances number twenty-three dash zero zero six, an ordinance to amend provisions within chapter ninety-four of the municipal code affecting detached accessory structures for non-residential use and temporary shelter. Motion to approve. Motion approved by Cronin.
Second.
Second by Feeny. Anything on the discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Forty-two, ordinance number twenty. So carry, forty-two, ordinance number twenty-three dash zero zero seven. An ordinance to approve the rezoning of a parcel of land at seven zero zero seven. County Road J from B three, general per, general business to L I. Limited industrial zoning district, Village Weston, Marathon County, Wisconsin.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Cronin.
Second.
Second by Feeny. Uh, on the discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry, resolutions, number forty-three, resolution two zero two three, dash zero zero nine. Preliminary resolution for Weston Avenue, Ryan to County Road J, special assessments.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Hermling.
Second.
Second by Feeny. On the discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Just dig that sun coming in here, huh? Anybody else feel that? Unfinished business, forty-four, update and possible action on American Rescue Plan ARPA funds. I think that's just a placeholder, right? I don't think there's nothing new on.
Well, I added a couple of things there, so we have a couple items on the agenda later. One is the July fourth fireworks.
Okay.
So a request for thirty-five million dollar contribution. Um, the other was, um, review of job descriptions. Um, for the directors and deputy directors that came out of committee from, uh, or was part of the discussion at the. Human Resources Committee meeting last night.
I can touch on that too.
I'm sorry?
I can touch on that too, if you'd like.
Um, so I did not have both proposals that I had requested. Um, on Wednesday. Um, actually, the estimated cost of this is higher than what I. Projected in here. I thought, you know, five thousand dollars, but. Uh, one of the proposals is for just under ten thousand. The other one is thirteen thousand five hundred from Carlson Detman, so. Um. Whether we, uh. Have those further reviewed maybe by H R committee before we take any action on those.
So, yeah, just to give everybody some background out of this, um, when the H R committee met, um, to review. Uh, uh, the compensation, the, the market adjustment for the employees of Weston. Um, it was really in line with, uh. The study that was done for Marathon County, so for ninety percent of positions that we have here at Weston. Uh, that meant we had something to compare to for a, a median salary, salary range. From a survey that was done out of Marathon County. Um, what wasn't comparable was at the director level. So we met at the H R committee, uh, with the other H R professionals. They said this is something that they do. Uh, several times a year, as they use, uh, this resource, it's, uh. There's actually two different agencies that they use quite frequently, um, to not only, um. Properly, uh, put together descriptions and the roles, responsibilities of the directors per that. Um, for that position, so you know, the same. Position that Jessica has here is Director of Finance, it's not the same position as Director of Finance at Schofield or Rothschild, things of that nature, so. In doing so, you have a really good, um. Grasp on their roles and responsibilities for that particular position in that agency. And then you're able to properly recruit and pay that position. Um, so that is the reason that, uh, V H R committee asked. The administrator to, um, reach out to these, uh, these two agencies. Uh, see what, uh, what that would cost the village, because it's something that we haven't done since, I believe, two thousand sixteen. So.
Is the Carl Detman, is that the one that Mickey Dirk Louie represented, right? Okay.
I believe so.
They're, uh, they're used.
Yep.
Like frequently, they're not.
Very familiar with them, yeah.
Yeah. So that would be the last step in, in our evaluation of, uh. That was all. In our evaluation of, um, um. Market adjustment for the, the wages and the rates of our employees here.
Okay, and then on the fireworks, could that not be under, um, tourism?
Yes, so I just was pointing out that, you know, the, those are potentially things that could be funded from ARPA. But as we talk about those items in particular, I guess, yeah, that would be another option.
Okay, we're, thank you.
You might fund that.
Okay. So.
This, I take it is not going to be just. A one-time thing and sure they're gonna want to do this annually.
Well, it's, it's kind of on the back, um, of Festival Foods, because Festival Foods is a primary for fireworks in all their communities. And, um, so I, I think they're doing what, thirty grand, I think? And then the rest is ponying up by the.
Yeah, we can cover that when we get to that.
Yeah, okay. So, I don't think we have any action on this, right? This is just a placeholder on the ARPA?
Right, and just maybe get to consider as we cover those items here later on.
Okay. Alright, uh, forty-five, uh, training room policy.
So, I don't know Valerie's on, but she had just put together some thoughts, kind of spitballing a few ideas on how the. Policy might. What it may, what the policy may include, so I don't know that we're looking for any kind of, uh. Finalization this right now, just getting some ideas out there in terms of what should be.
Do, do we want to talk about this or we do a little more about it or, what is your pleasure?
I am, um, if you guys have any questions with me.
Thank you, Valerie. So did we have one, uh, blood? Right?
The one that occurred in, uh.
Yeah.
February?
Yeah, did that go pretty good, Valerie?
Yeah, it went very well. They were, yep, through, worked great.
Okay, so we, we're utilizing this room next behind us, right?
Right, right, next one's in April, right?
So then we, this door here is, you know, signed to come in that door, correct?
Yes, April sixth is the next one.
Oh, um, I'm, I'm just pointing the staff that it's not the main doors. If they come in and come through here, they would come in this door here.
Right.
Yeah, through the side door there.
Okay. So it's, it's noticed, you know, coming through here for that, okay?
But does this have to be limited to just Village of Weston functions?
Yeah, that's what I was.
For example, I know Tom Tiffany does town hall listening sessions monthly. If you ever wanted to have one here, would that be something we would? Be welcoming to, or?
I'm just saying that anything we welcome, we have to welcome all.
Mm-hmm. Correct.
So if, if we welcome, uh, that's what I was saying the last time on the blood drives. If somebody else wants to do blood drive here, we're going to be welcoming other blood drives. I, I don't think we get to pick and choose, you know, whether it's, uh. Uh, I know we talked about a hosted event by an employee. I, I just think we have to be really, really careful what we're opening this up for, very careful. I do, Mark, okay, go ahead.
Okay. Go ahead.
Oh, no, I guess I would be a little concerned in that. These blood drives, they're cleaning up after themselves and whatever. Um, I don't know if, you know, have been with the listening session. Are they going to clean up and take care of things and lock up and everything else? Um, that is a concern. And, um. I think you've got to be real careful because. Like I said years ago, when the old municipal center, we used to rent it out and it got trashed and we, we were. Paying, cleaning people to come in and weren't, you know, I mean, it, it was not. Cash flowing at all.
Sure. And it's not really meant to cash flow, but it's not supposed to cost. And I, and I think that's the big issue. So anything we have here really needs to be hosted by staff or by a board member. I mean, that's really what, what we're talking about. And then can a person or can how many would actually be able to cover the facility? You know, so I, I just think we better take a long, long, hard look at this. I mean, it's been working and it's done, done very well with Valerie on her blood drives, but, uh. On anything else, just be careful.
Yeah, I guess it's kind of crazy because I got a, a email from Brian from Chanel. And he would like to, he wanted to meet with myself and. Um, Lauren and anybody else, yeah. Um, about how the, um, annexation took place. And I guess can't figure out where we could meet and I didn't know if. If I could just, it would just be the three, four of us because his wife was going to come. Could I bring him in and just stand in the hall? I mean, I don't know. I was going to ask that question.
Well, as a board member, I think you could talk to staff and we've, we've got several different.
Okay, well, yes, but I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
I wasn't doing anything because we're in conversation here and. And I said, well, you know, he was surprised that I was willing to meet with him, but other than that, um. And I said, well, sure, but I had to check to make sure I was not going to violate any. Of our rules because I don't want to step out of the line.
If we just notice our, to ourselves, you know, no one's at a board level. At what's happening, so there's no surprises.
Mm-hmm.
And of course staff, you know, we have to be transparent for staff, so, yeah.
Okay, so I, I would be okay to check with staff to find out, like I said, it'd just be the four of us unless somebody else wanted to come in, but. Um.
You've got a front and center one right up front.
Right, that, I mean, it's just, he just wanted to know how it came about.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And he said we are the two oldest people in. Thanks a lot.
Okay. Uh, going back to Steve's point earlier, you know, whether. Uh, Congressman Tiffany or Senator Baldwin or whoever wants to have a listening session. I mean, maybe our definition could be to. Ex, could expand to be something, uh, beneficial to the. Uh, to the residents of Weston, but I'd also want to see if Attorney E D. Has, if there's any like Wisconsin Supreme Court rulings or, uh. Federal Supreme Court rulings that. You know, either it's one hundred percent or zero percent or any other guidelines for us. I think it's really simple that, you know, once you open that door, it's open to everybody.
Well, I guess I have a little concern in that, um, I don't want to. To, what I want to say. There's places they can rent.
Right.
And I guess I don't want to take away from, from the businesses. That they would have to rent from.
Alright, and, and they also cater food, they ca, they cater beverages. Where we would rather not have that here, you know, because of the cleanup and, and the usage and all that.
Right, that would be my.
Okay, I, I think this is going to be a long discussion on the training. I really do, because it's, there's going to be a lot of things coming up. And I think staff should be involved on what they think too and. It's going to put a little pressure on the building and pressure on the park, so. Okay? Are we good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, alright, thank you, Valerie.
No problem.
Okay, forty-six, uh, let's see, the Syntas contract. And Jim, you had a question on this one too?
I did.
Okay. So, new business, Syntas contract, um, is this, were we heading in this direction with this building? Did we downsize this a lot? I thought we had a lot of, I, I had a lot of talks, I wanted to know what. Our thoughts were with how to clean this building, how we're going to clean the showers and all that kind of stuff. Um, you know, hopefully we don't have printed rugs and all this stuff, I. I have, uh, through my forty-five year career, I have had absolute nightmares. With this, this, if this is not controlled, this is. This gets completely out of control. And I mean, uh, you've got, uh, people authorizing things and. With a quick comment and all of a sudden it's on the contract, so. I'd be really, really careful with any contract. I'm not talking about this company in particular, any contract. So. Let's move forward. What do we got? Who's talking?
So, yeah, there have been some changes towards the end of the year as we were making transition. Um. Mr. Pincenalt had asked for this to be discussed, so, um. I know he's met with staff already to talk about status of some things. Are there other things to be scrutinized that's, there may be, yes, I'm, I'm sure, but, um.
Well, I.
Not sure what.
You know.
Been, uh.
I think a real simple, uh, Dan.
I'm sorry, Mark, to interrupt, but.
Yeah.
Um, Jim brought it to our attention because they're a provider for him.
Mm-hmm.
Um, in transition, moving to this building. I was more concerned with the uniforms. I wasn't involved with it before, Michael, little, you know, somewhat. A past employee was more involved as far as. The goal here was when we got to the new building, because I've run into this in my previous career at other places, the uniforms, exactly what you said, it gets crazy. So what I've been doing is when Syntas comes, I take. The uniforms that are allowed to each person, have them check to see to make sure they don't have three pairs of pants sitting at home that they never wear. That was my goal, number one. Jim brought some good points to the table when it came to why, what are we paying for this? And if you want to enlighten them too, Jim, how that, or, you know.
Just before Jim starts, um, no, no, stand right at the wooden chair. So, and I think you'll go here too, is, um, have we gone back and looked at the Syntas, is this, how long has Syntas been here? It's, it's the green.
They bought them five years ago.
Okay, so for five years, we should have a, um, a yearly cost. Everything, it, it does, I don't even want to dive into anything, I just want to know what the entire cost was that year to Syntas. Uh, credits, charges, oil rigs, things thrown out, things kept, things this, everything. There should be a number. To attach to every year. And then what is the projected cost from Syntas on this building with what they're drawing up right now? I'd like to just know, you know, what, you know, so, sort of does the size of the building enlarge the contract? Because of rugs and different things? I don't know. Is it, is it because of all the bathrooms and the soap dispensers?
No, you've got to turn in front of the horse, Mark.
Yep. No, no, actually I don't, and I dealt with this enough, Dan, and I'm telling you. Um, when you deal with these contracts, uh, I think a lot of it is smoke and mirrors. You may think you understand it.
No, 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 no.
Nobody understands this stuff.
I don't.
And, and worse than this is waste haulers. It's unbelievable. Try to get out of one at once, so. Uh, whoever wants the floor, you brought it up, Jim, go ahead.
Yeah, so I just. Dan mentioned really well that I just. I, I look at the finance report every month and I saw, I'm like, oh gosh, we, one of the lines is. I don't know, soap and rags or something, I saw a thousand dollars. Car washes would be a thousand dollars for soap and towels every month. Like, why are we paying a thousand dollars or two thousand dollars a month? Then there may be two lines on there. I don't know if that's for two months or whichever, but just looked at that and I said, alright, well, let's get some of these past. Statements and see if we, we really do use that much in soap and towels. Um, so we looked at it and I saw that what I paid per unit and what the Village of Weston pays per unit are not the same. And some of that, I think, is just because of the pricing plan and structure that you're on. You're, you're serviced by the same Syntas, but a different. Out of a different warehouse. You come out of Marshfield or Rapids or something, it might comes out of Pointe Globe. But same company and they should have the same, we're on a national pricing with, with one of our all of our here, um, partners, but. There's similar things available for municipalities and after profits and I don't know that. The Village of Weston was on that and I think they're going to be on that or that's a proposed contract. I don't think. What is on the board, I think that's the previous contract you were in, a couple of things that I noted. So this, this contract is identical to mine on this page here and the next page, other than they, you know, they changed the dollars per item and whichever, but. All this boilerplate is the same. In there are things that stand out to me or that. Like Mark said, are, are tricked out of. Page four, the contract online. Paragraph seven, it says contract will automatically renew if notice is not provided ninety to a hundred day, eighty days prior to its expiration. It also states that the company can raise prices at any time. But the customer can reject those increases within ten days, in which case. The company may terminate the contract. So even though you sign that each shirt is going to be a dollar a piece. Tomorrow they could show up with your invoice and say, oh, yeah, shirts are two dollars a piece now. If you don't tell them within ten days that you don't want that, doesn't matter. You still play the game until ninety to a hundred eighty days before the con, contract terminates, that you have to notify them in writing.
And do they also have a, a time period to rectify? Yes, you don't just get that one day, if they have.
It is a waste hauler. Thirty or forty-five days.
Yes, exactly.
Have a time to come back. It also shows on there, um. That's, uh, there was like a seventy-five percent clause or somewhere's in there, so. Say we had a hundred dollar bill this month and we said, you know, well, we really don't need all these rugs and soap and towels and whichever and we're all just. Get on our t-shirts to work. You were still mandated to pay at least seventy-five percent of that, that contracted invoice number. That's on that contract that's, that's on here. So even if we cut stuff, you're still tied to at least seventy-five percent of the original contract. So I think there's a lot more to it. My recommendation is, I, I think the board should review the contract. And sign it and prove it, not ask that number. Um, and they may not like that at the Syntas level, but they're still going to keep bringing you your stuff. They're just going to. Come here and help your legacy, but didn't you sign it yet?
So, right now, um, the last signature is, uh, the past clerk, correct?[1738.74]
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We received the new contract proposal, I think it was last week or this week, Michael was reviewing it. And just to get back to where I was before, at the old building, there were soap dispensers and stuff like that, that was all taken out, we have none of that here. We are stocking our own towels here, hand towels to paper ones, to soap and purchasing. I'm dealing strictly with the uniforms, I don't know about the rugs up front, what's happening.
We don't have any rugs.
There's no more rugs.
Pardon?
Any rugs we have are purchased, we we bought them, we don't want them.
That's we did too.
Same in the shop, you come in the doors, instead of slippery, we just bought rubber mats, or I'll say Calvin from the old building and the goal is clean them. So basically, what we should be dealing with right now is the uniform portion of it, which Jim met with us when Syntas was here and them. And yeah, I think it was kind of an eye opener for them that they were getting questioned on things, which is a good thing, but it still comes down to the employees, that's what I was gonna have you for. You can get them ten pairs of pants, but thirty pairs of pants, why have seven sitting at home? So the goal is to have the employees reviewing what they, their clothing is and keeping it up to date. So when the Syntas guy stops and they give us the report of what everybody has, I print it or copy it, I scan it, I give it to staff, up there, street staff, and it can get shared electronically with utilities and parks and say, please review this, make sure you have what they're saying on here, number one, because as the season's changed, the clothing will change, then also it'll give us something to itemize and figure out where we're at money wise on this.
So who's doing soap dispensers and toilet paper and stuff like that? We are there.
We are. In-house.
We are, oh, that's fantastic. So the shop towels get used to clean up oil. Do all the employees know not to do that?
Pardon?
Because if you do that in the contract, it says they will not accept them and you just bought that towel.
Um, what's talked about so far between.
I mean, because this contract, you need to train this contract to the employees.
Right, I under- well, that, hence why I took and I made copies of what they're getting, otherwise if you don't, if you don't show the employees what we're getting billed for every week, you're defeating the purpose. Get back to the shop towels, Ryan Schmidt, our shop, super foreman, whatever, our lead mechanic, he's reviewed what we're we're at on this and it's, we might just be purchasing our own, we've got a washing machine and washing ourselves. So we're gonna look at it cost wise and and get it down to square one and try, the goal of us is to save the money, you know? And I appreciate Jim coming down, he took time out of his day to do it.
Well, it's very specific on those shop towels, you know, that if you use them to clean up uh certain substances, they won't take them back, or they will, you'll think they're taking them back, and they're just gonna either discard them or do whatever, and then they're gonna charge us full value, so. And you know, if we don't know not to do that, then that's just gonna continue. Uh the the words and the amount of pages in these are all by design.
Mm-hmm.
So, okay.
So we're not doing rugs, rags, soaps, we're just doing uniforms?
I thought Keith had talked about that several months ago, six, seven months ago, that that staff was looking at this and and trying to figure out how, you know, this building is gonna be so big, you know, with with the carpeting and all the different, you know, floor surfaces, do we even need some of this stuff, you know? And I I think what you said too, buying some of the mats and my god, just throwing them away after a couple of years, get a vacuum cleaner.
You take them out of the washing bay and take a pressure washer to them, that's what I do, clean them up and let them dry and put them back.
Yep. Good, okay. Jim, well.
But just so I understand, all this stuff, it's just uniforms, you're gonna be dealing with them.
It's it's, we're not buy, I don't know about the office, but if we, we're not doing any mats from them, then strictly, as far as I know, it was the shop rags and uniforms, that's it. And I get the report from him on the uniforms every week, Thursday he shows up, he gives us that. And then Renee pays the bill off of that, but I still want the guys that are getting issued the uniforms to make sure that they have what we're getting billed for. And if there's not a need for it, then we're not paying, we're gonna get changed.
Jim, does that go through some of the questions you had?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Alright, we have a Dan and Michael and the the Syntas rep, and I think there were one or two other, maybe the regional guy and the route driver were there. There were just questions that were asked, and and I think some of the stuff is, this was originally a G K contract, and Syntas bought them and stepped in, and some of the stuff didn't change or didn't transfer over, or it was, we bought this so we can just write a fourteen percent loss rate, let's make it an eighteen percent loss rate on your stuff as we can, and no one ever looked at it, we just stored the check and paid the bill. Had it, questioning it, yeah, I guess we could change that, and so a lot of those conversations were, yeah, do we need
Okay.
two or three jackets in July? Probably not, we can put some of those on hold and not charge us two dollars that week, right? Yes, it's two dollars, but.
That's big time.
Many guys, times, whatever.
So are we currently under no contract? Because it's null and void of the building?
Well, it automatically renewed.
But how can it?
We need to get a new, we need to get a new contract.
But I mean, but are they signing? So we, we've got, doesn't the address change? Null it right there, can that float over here?
No, it's a trash thing.
I just, well, the trash thing though, uh Attorney Eadie said that if they change names, it's null and void. And we watch for the the invoices and the change of name, and once that happens, it's null and void.
I think, I don't know how long it's been Syntas.
Well, he said five years, I just thought maybe the change of the building, location, the address, might be done.
Is it what the address on page one two is?
Yeah, it's got the old address.
Yeah, my question is.
And and the old clerk, the clerk that's not here anymore, yeah.
If it, if it renewed, but we aren't having any of the rugs or anything, we aren't gonna be charged or anything, we're just being charged for uniforms and rags.
Exactly, and the soap dispensers, they pulled from the old building, all that stuff that was in the old building, they removed, that was theirs.
Ken? Well, that was my biggest thing, if if it renewed, I hope it's with what we're using, not what we have.
Technically, the way the contract reads though, is we would still be on the hook for seventy-five percent of what that original one was, that charity sign, that automatically renewed.
It's, it's, just so you know, it's so many things you don't have to accept. So if the terms, if we don't like the terms, we can rewrite them. The the, those are not in stone, you know, they want business, so, Steve?
When's the last time we looked at another supplier?
There's not many left.
Well, I.
Just like waste, waste haulers.
I'm just, I use Airmark.
Yep.
And I don't, I granted, I don't do a ton of stuff through them, but the stuff that I that I do use at my shop, um, they were by far the most credibly priced.
I would, I would just uh search the companies and just see who the parent company was.
Just a thought, maybe maybe look at somebody else.
They might be all, they might be all owned by somebody. Steve, uh, this is a uh contract for one calendar year, correct?
I believe that's the old contract, and what Jim had brought up was there's the organization called Omni Partners, it's a nationwide contract. Syntas is a member of that, and that's why I'm glad you came down and you brought that up, they sent us, their manager emailed us the contract this past week, where we would become a member of Omni Partners and receive the nationwide pricing on this stuff. Michael was reviewing through some of it, because when it came to the budget, we had to, for each employee, four uniforms. So it's a matter, but it's kinda like you need to go through with a fine tooth comb right now, but we we are working to that point, that's where we're gonna get to.
Are you on Omni?
We're not, but we're on another asset pricing, or that's similar, that, or that is your advantage, that that's where you can beat the Airmark or the Beetal or any of these other outfits that are out there is because they're just like a cable company, they'll come in at a great rate, but page four, line seven states, well, we can change the price number one. So they'll change their prices, whether it's next year, next month, next whichever, and now, oh, well, this is what it costs for rags now.
Yeah, there's environmental fees, there's.
Obviously, you can just play the elevator, I mean, do this grading structured rate, where if you're on this national pricing profile, my price hasn't changed since twenty fifteen at all. I can't go to the grocery store and get the same thing.
Yep, well, they should be.
Since twenty fifteen.
They should be becoming more efficient. Alright, um, I don't think we have action on this, we're just for discussion only, correct?
Correct.
Okay, uh forty-seven, again, Jim, uh mobile food vendors ordinance.
I think it's Dan, but I can throw one.
Oh, I know you had, you had that circle for some questions, go ahead, Pam, anything on that?
Well, I, it's, it's put on, it's, Jim had asked questions about it last year and he came to the board um last fall and then uh was decided to bring back onto the board, uh back to the board this spring before the licensing season started again. But basically, the question was if the board wants to have licensing, uh, make a licensing requirement for mobile food vendors if they're on private property.
I I'll go first, I'm not in favor of that, I believe they're licensed, they have to be licensed with uh.
Marathon County.
Marathon County or Lincoln County.
I think any county in Wisconsin.
Any county, uh the, which kinda kicked this whole thing off at your old uh place, was uh he was registered at Lincoln County, we were confused and we thought it should be Marathon County. So he was, by rights, could have stayed there the whole day, and that would have been just such a uh um, so much going on, so.
I'm not in favor of requiring.
I absolutely not, I I'm not at all, and uh, my gosh, you know, so uh, and then I think there's something in there that I read that said we have to protect our businesses and um restaurants, right?
Well, and I.
So, in my mind, with that, and for what I do, but yet we encourage our farmer's market. So we're not looking out for the grocery stores selling produce, we're not looking out, and people can sell corn on the corner or go to the farmer's market and sell away. And um, and we're actually supporting it. So I think it's a little wrong that we're gonna say that we're gonna look at a a food truck. Um, and and it's kinda whimsical, the way that, they're not there forever, they're not gonna, you know, they're not, you know, brick and mortar, but um and they're exciting, but you know, the, you don't, you don't go to the same restaurant every day. You you really want three or four or five in the area, so you just hope everybody comes there for lunch or for supper. And they, and everybody gets their turn, so, that's my thought. Uh, rest of the board can talk or discuss or decide.
If you don't have licensing, are you gonna have some type of, um, I mean, are we gonna have five, six of them in a row, or are we gonna, you know, say how many can be in a area, I mean.
Yeah, I thought we were leaving that up to the business owners who are sponsoring it, because it's basically their their property to, and left it up to the chief of police to make a make his determination on the spot.
You know, they wanna put four, uh, I mean, if Jim wants to take his parking lot and put uh two of them back to back and put them two wide and have four of them.
Throw a party.
That's totally up to him, yeah, that's totally up to him. Yep, so uh, there's, there's a lot of stuff, I mean, so a lot of these charity events, like in front of the grocery store, I think you can only have three. I think the Marathon County, I don't know if somebody knows this, but when I was running the grocery store here, we could only have so many at a certain time, and I think, I think.
So many a year.
Yeah, so many a year, and I I thought that was a little restrictive, because I can go to Sam's or Walmart and there, every week, there's a charity event out there. And maybe that's not happening anymore, but uh, and I know Ace almost through the entire summer has that thing going, and it's all to charity, you know, different groups and stuff, so. I I just think we have enough going on, and I think we have enough to look at and license and check on and police. I don't think this is somewhere where we wanna go, I just don't.
Um, my, the other question that was on here was the insurance, or we just, not required of?
Well, if I can interrupt, I'm sorry, if if we have food vendors on public property, we should, we should, I highly suggest they have the insurance because
Yep, I agree.
that's protecting the village, but
I agree.
private property, there, if the ordinance would be changed, if you would wanna remove that licensing, you wouldn't even worry about the insurance. It's just.
So just.
It's not required.
Let's just walk through a public one, so I I got a food truck and I wanna be uh where, I wanna be here, I wanna be at Kennedy Park?
Kennedy Park.
Okay, so, I mean, that that would be a really big deal, you know, so we're gonna, they've gotta come here and talk to us, but private property, no.
The ordinance reads you can't, then I'm.
That's in Wausau.
Yep, but but we're gonna, but we're gonna move our ordinance around, you know, so.
Right now, it reads that we can't.
Yeah.
So if we wanna have this fireworks thing and have four food trucks set up there, no, not till you change it.
Yeah. I think they, you know, they've gotta come here to, you know, get approval for whatever site, and then we have to probably have a limit on it. But I think right now, why don't we worry about the private first, and then we can tackle the public later? Because we could be walked down here for two weeks on public.
So you would remove the private, but leave everything the same for public?
Yeah.
Okay.
Until we jump into it, change it again, yeah. I don't, I don't think we're having, I don't think we're having any issues with public, right? There's nothing.
No, we're not allowed.
No. I know, but, but we also haven't had any, I I know, but we haven't had any incidents, nobody's said, hey, I wanna be on public, hey, I wanna be here, uh, you know.
Digital Little League or Pony League or something want vendors, I thought we allowed them at the park.
They, they, I'm pretty sure we do.
So. We've had them for baseball, we've had them for West Fest, we've had them for skate park events, we have.
But but then they come here and.
That's what I'm saying, how how can we, how can we say they're not allowed?
Isn't that not permitted though?
Yeah, because we're we're approving those events.
And they go through, they, they go through a special event permit typically.
So that goes around the.
Which is in right away or parks.
Yeah.
Uh.
So, right now, what uh paragraph three says, it is, it shall be unlawful for any person or persons to operate a mobile food vendor unit on public or private property and open to the public except as provided in this article and without first having obtained a license. So you can do it on public and private, but right now it says you have to have a license.
So if they have a license through Marathon County, because their truck is licensed and have been inspected and insured or.
The, our ordinance is just stating that you have to have it with us.
Yeah, with us.
But yes, you have to through the county.
And we're gonna drop the private, we're gonna drop the private.
Yes.
I I don't know if we're gonna do a permit or instead of a license for public, so what was my thought here?
Public goes with a outdoor, somewhere special event.
Yeah, how does it work with uh farmer's market, is that public or private? That's not ours, that's private.
With leads, sound event.
Even overusing it, yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, and then they pay a fee for to, they pay a fee to be in the farmer's market.
Um, all, I I know, but the food trucks, there's a, there's a several food trucks.
Trucks do too.
They pay, they pay the same thing as.
Yep, I I think we need to probably look at the farmer's market too, because I, if I have a food truck, I don't have a chance in hell of getting my food truck at that farmer's market, period. As long as anyone else that's in there before me keeps paying every year, including everybody in the tables, even if I have something completely new, even though there's fifteen other vendors in there, all doing exactly the same thing every single time, but I've got something brand new, something really cool, I can't get in. And uh, that is the same way that it was worked at Wausau when Red Market ran it, and it was done to keep some competition out. And I I think we just need to look at this, we need to really look at this and open this up and maybe have it be a lottery. You know, so everyone, I think that's getting um weights and measures things tonight, is because they're, they know they're all in already uh at the farmer's market, nobody else has a chance to get in them. And I think the food trucks will be that same food truck or two or three forever, until they decide to get out. I mean, I'm just, you know.
There's, there's additional ones during the spring, when there's not as many farmers, but some of it is, there's just no space for it.
It's not big enough.
There's, some of them need electricity and they just don't have that access.
But I I just think the rotation and the variety would be important. I mean, God forbid, in a couple of years, we go to, you know, somebody goes there and says, that's just the same, it's never changed, it's just nothing, it's just the same as it always is. I can get fruits and vegetables or mostly vegetables, and I can get all these flowers, they're beautiful, by the way. But there's nothing different, so, just um, just a caution, so.
So are we looking uh to drop the private property for the mobile food vendors? So I'm I'm motion to take private property language out of the uh mobile food vendor uh ordinance.
Um.
I'll second it.
Point of order?
Mm-hmm.
I don't believe that we have the uh authority to do that based on the um, based on the official action, the only thing that we.
Direct staff to, well, I am directing staff to remove the, I'm I'm, okay, I'll I'll correct that, I'm directing staff remove the private property from the ordinance and then bring it back to us in April, please.
I'll second that.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, sir.
Are they, are they required to be licensed through our county though, correct? We said that before.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Licensed to the county.
A county, yes.
A county, yes.
A county, yeah.
Okay, so just, I just clarification, so what we're doing right now is we're gonna do this, vote on this for next month. Everything in this entire thing is the same way, we're not gonna be doing the accessories contract. So we're gonna talk about it and move it to next month, are you serious? Yes or no? No?
The accessories contract is for this one.
Yeah, I know, but it doesn't say we're gonna vote on it, like Nate said. I just wanna know what we're doing, this, this is not normal.
I don't think it's.
He's talking in the packet, there's this language on that.
I don't think it's necessary to actually, based on my, my, based on my experience with agendas, I don't think you have to say to take action on it.
Okay, so, but but under the mobile food, so then I'm not remembering this, so we did not set it up to have action tonight. We just had it set up, then why aren't we?
I I would think if it's, if it's an agenda item and we're gonna have a discussion on it, and there's a quorum of us here, we, as long as it's agenda that we're gonna.
So what are you talking about?
We get.
My.
Just taking action or something.
Just wait, just wait, just wait.
So for me, I was, um, okay, so I was looking at the recommended language for official action as the actionable item. Uh, so, I do see that, okay, so in the question on page uh two twenty-seven, um, should the board amend the ordinance, okay, so.
I just wanna, I just wanna hear you say it.
Yeah, so I'm. Yes, I do stand corrected, thank you, alright, alright, thank you.
Okay, that's right.
Not, not too often you make me say it, I know.
So can we drop it then, or?
No, we're we're gonna prove it, we're gonna prove it right now.
Okay.
So what, you you had a motion and you had a second, uh anywhere in the discussion, Jim?
Yes, I just have a couple, two, three things here, um, can we change the license term from January one to December thirty-one? Right now, I think it's July one to June thirty.
But there is no license, we're taking it up.
Yeah, that would just be for public then.
For public, sure, but if, if if someone wants to set up for Memorial Day and then Fourth of July, that's two permits.
And that's fine.
I see.
You have to start all over.
Oh, oh.
Background check and make sure I'm not on no, no fly list and all that.
We have background check and make sure I'm not on no, no fly list and all that.
Okay.
No, that's a good point.
Okay, and then you have more?
Um. Yes, can we remove the lemonade stand exemption on commercial property? Or include the word "commercial property" to be exempted?
Oh, yeah, for private, same thing, or isn't that?
No, no, I think you'd have to make.
It's, it says, uh, not for, you don't need a permit for resident, to do a lemonade stand on residential property, but it doesn't specifically call out commercial property, it's exempted from it.
You want, you wanna pass it next month.
Yeah, so if Nora comes to me again on August tenth and wants to set up a lemonade stand and raise three hundred fifty dollars for Gigi's Playhouse, I'm gonna give her the thumbs up, whether your thing says yes or no, but I'd like her to be in. I would hate to have her as Metro Center.
Now, now we're saying private property and commercial property, are we saying a resident can put a food truck in their front yard? We're not saying that.
The zoning, the zoning regulations.
There's, so there is zoning regulations that still stands, so that.
Okay, so we're good.
It would also prohibit them from setting up all summer in one front yard, right, you know, seven days or something.
Yeah, they can only, so basically you don't have to have the license because the zoning, the regulations we have in there, if somebody does do something that is too long, like to seven days, then we can start a zoning enforcement there.
Okay. Okay, okay, so we're doing, um, we commercial and private?
We don't necessarily, this is gonna come back to us anyways, we're just directing staff. So we don't really have to.
Well, I think we wanna, what we're trying to do is vote on it to get the action on it tonight.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're gonna do.
So I'm, I'm making, I'm making my nose to help Pam out here.
So you're doing.
We're gonna have to amend this.
You're amending.
Okay, so I'll amend it. I'll amend your motion to change the dates to a regular calendar year.
Yes, calendar year.
And?
So that's the term.
Adding commercial.
We're adding commercial as part of the public property.
I know, private property.
I thought commercial is already part of this.
No, public property is already allowed with a license. I think what Jim was saying.
Commercial and private, right, commercial and private.
The private.
Yep.
And then Jim was, Jim added that he wanted the lemonade stand to be allowed on public and private property.
Or private and commercial.
Private and commercial.
We're getting there.
Okay, so would it be easier just to resend your motion and just redo it?
Yeah, probably.
Let's do that, okay?
So we're gonna private and commercial is what we're removing.
And the dates.
And the dates.
Uh, changing the dates, okay?
Term to account.
So we do, you need a motion to resend first?
Okay, so, uh, I'd like to resend my motion.
Second.
All who's in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie, now, what's your pleasure?
I, I'd like to take a motion to, I'd like to make a motion to remove the, the private property and commercial from the ordinance, is that correct?
Just private.
And just private. And change the dates.
And change the date to a calendar year. So it'll be one, January one to December thirty-first.
Both from by Hardinger?
Second.
Second by Cornyn?
And lemonade stand commercial adoption.
How do we, how do we do the lemonade stand, Pam?
Pardon?
How do we do the lemonade stand on, on, on commercial property? What do we, what do we do in the ordinance for that?
Well, we will just add that the lemonade stand would be allowed.
A commercial.
So right now it says a person under the age of eighteen operating a le, okay, the exemption that they can bend without a license includes a person under the age of eighteen operating a lemonade stand or the equivalent thereof on privately owned residential use property, and Jim wants to add commercial to that.
Okay, we wanna add commercial to that, but it's also not under eighteen, right, cuz you said Gigi's, is there kids doing it, or they're? Yes, I know, it's for the kid.
That's a, a, a child that approached me and said, hey, please don't offer it, yeah.
No, she's a child.
That's what I asked you, yeah, okay.
Okay, any more?
So let's to change, authorize staff to change the ordinance for next month.
No, enact it tonight.
We're doing it, we're enacting it tonight.
Well, I have to bring it back.
You have to see, read the ordinance as it is to quit.
I'll bring the. The ordinance will be on next month with the changes, and then you'll prove that ordinance.
Right.
Yep, okay. Uh, all who's in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie, wanna take a break or something? Uh, snow, snow removal operations, uh, not blew it out, so that's.
Want me to take this?
What do you, oh, sure.
I sent it to email, so.
Why is it not blew?
There's just nothing attached.
Yeah, there's nothing.
Wow, eighteen years, I finally got it. All right.
So I'm probably, I think the rest of, I, I sent an email, I think the rest of the board got sent the email, you might have seen Michael's response. Might get a couple dirty looks here, that's okay, I just wanna ask the questions and answer, that's all. Um, I, this last week after that snow, I noticed that we had some crews out multiple days. Pushing back banks, blowing snow, and for the amount of snow that we had and with it being late in March, I, I personally thought that that was a a little bit of a waste of some of our funds, just my two cents, and I, I don't know what the rest of the board thinks, maybe some other people wanna chime in and give their two cents, that was just my opinion, I spoke to a few other people who shared that opinion, so I thought it was worth a discussion.
Michael, are you still online?
No, I'm up here. I'm up at PTO, oh my gosh.
Martin, do you wanna say something?
Well, several years ago, I had commented and somebody else had commented about, well, Jesus, it's gonna melt, why don't they just leave it melt? So I came and asked the question. I didn't drag it out, I just came in and said, why do you feel, you know, you do that? And it was explained about the fact that some of the drainage, if that's not cleaned out, it gets clogged up and it gets into the roads, and I know one of the places that used to get it all the time is right by Pick and Save and Down Around There. It, it can get, the water can get pretty high if it's not, doesn't have proper drainage. I also was told, of course, that some of the banks, and after I thought about it, I thought, well, I guess if you have a pickup truck or whatever, you can get out on Schofield Avenue pretty good, you can probably look over. When you got a little, um, car Honda, you try getting out there without getting your front end taken off. Um, even my driveway, which is partially, the village plowed too much snow and, and the, the guy had to, I've been having it plowed this year, cuz I can't do it. And I have a fairly high snowbank right by my mailbox, so thank goodness it started to melt. And I had a difficult time getting out of my own driveway. And it was my, like I said, it was my own fault, but I guess I don't have a problem with it. I don't think the, the staff or the, are going out there just to spend money and they, they're, they're doing it for a reason.
Michael, do you have anything to add there?
No, I guess, you know, it wasn't anything we were planning to do for, you know, weeks on end. Dan had received a couple phone calls from residents for, you know, kinda what Barb was describing, people who were having difficulty getting out of their driveway. They were afraid they were gonna get hit or, you know, hi- hit a kid or something like that, walking, you know, past their house. So we went through a few residential neighborhoods, and then, you know, Schofield Ave, especially the south side. That curb line, you know, the sun never hits it, you know, there's shaded areas where, you know, it doesn't melt very well. And historically, we've had issues where it, you know, the temperature might get warm enough during the day where it melts, but then at night it refreezes. And we end up with black ice issues, so we, we did go out and, you know, spent, you know, I think it was maybe twelve hours, you know, a day and a half removing snow. And, you know, I, I could tell you, Dan and I would have rather the guys been out patching potholes and getting some of our streets back in good working condition, but you know, on that Monday, you know, we had just finished plowing over the weekend, and they were already predicting, you know, I think on Monday afternoon, they were saying eight to twelve inches on Friday. You know, so we were just trying to get, get, try to get, stay ahead of it, cuz once we get behind, we, we stay behind. So, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying, Steve, you know, we don't wanna be wasting time. You know, we, we were reporting back to a few specific residential neighborhoods that called and had concerns. And then also, you know, trying to take care of Schofield Ave and spots that we're trying to keep the safety of the traveling public in, in mind there. Cuz we kinda know what happens if we don't, so, I, I guess, yeah.
I mean, I saw, I saw a lot of the emails going back and forth, and so one thing that hasn't got black ice this year is Schofield Ave by Altis. Without that tree line there, that was always a real pain, it never melted and now it is, so. But, yeah, I, I kinda drove around after I saw some of the emails, and it is the main arteries, if you go up to a community where maybe our administrator lives. It's a daily occurrence, and it's, I mean, my, they're grooming everywhere, and, you know, maybe they have to, maybe there's some water problems there. But I drove around that community also, and they're out every single day, I mean, twelve, six, seven units, I mean, they're everywhere.
So you understand how we work with the street department, I, I would hope every, I, I wanna just talk about this for a few minutes, but.
Sure.
Michael and I, you know, I keep a praise of what we're doing, pretty much. But also, there's a lot of institutional knowledge in our street department. One of them is sitting right there, Mr. Leestrop, okay, thirty years here. Forrest Blark's got seventeen years here. So what we do is we have discussions on what are we doing this week, what are we doing next week? I've been here three and a half years, but I rely on their expertise. And when they say we need to do something, I, at, you know, I review it and discuss it with them, but I do trust them, okay? I brought the employee handbook along tonight, and I'm not gonna lecture people, because they're all grown adults. But I don't know if all the elected officials receive this. If you don't, I think you should get a copy, and I have a list of the pertinent places in here where you should read. Because it talks about the, not specifically institutional knowledge, but the culture we're trying to build at Weston, and I believe we have it. In the three and a half years I've been here, I trust the staff I work with and I respect them a lot, I do. Their hearts have been in the game, we've been getting pounded with snow. They don't take PTO because they know it's gonna snow and they come in and do their job. So I think they deserve respect from me and from the citizens, and they get it. Going back to the hauling of the snow, I did receive two complaints, one was on Ricky Bell, the other was one on Trotzer. The woman on Ricky Bell, and I can give you their phone numbers, because after we removed the snow and the emails came, I lost sleep at night on the cone of that. And Mr. Cronin, last July, you did that to me with Ross Avenue, you posted stuff on Nextdoor that I found insulting to me and our staff. And I'm, I'm gonna say this now because.
That's, that's a whole nother conversation, if you and I wanna have that conversation afterwards, we can, let's stay on what we're, what we're.
Okay, but I knew this was gonna happen, so I'm not here to argue with anybody, I'm just, I'm bringing this up for a reason. I am mailing contracts out, emailing contracts out this week for various street maintenance projects. And I need to know from the board if I am gonna be treated with the respect I feel I deserve and the citizens deserve and the employees deserve when it comes to these projects. We had a talk at the Public Works Committee last week, and Hushane made the comment, oh, we need to get this done. When it comes to asphalt paving, there is one player in the game here that's big enough. And I can write the contracts so that we will get that done in a week's time. I know Ross Avenue got strung out last year. We are gonna pay through the nose for it. Because they are not gonna give up their state work where they're really under the gun to come and do our stuff. So that's why I brought this up tonight, because I don't wanna live through what I lived through last year. Getting back to the snow removal, after we removed the snow, I called the people that called me. I asked them that they were satisfied with it, cuz the banks, and I have pictures I can send you, are, were six feet high. Both of them thanked me immensely. And then I asked them, I said, and I didn't give any names out, but I said, there's a village board trustee that is questioning why we did this. Would you have an issue if I gave the village trustees your phone number and they could call you to find out what the results were? And they said, gladly. I'm not doing this to be mean, I just don't wanna ruin what we have going on here in Weston. I didn't share your emails with staff because I know what it would have done to them, it would have crushed them. They don't deserve that. Their hearts are in this. And I just hope everybody that is an elected official or a part-time employee here takes all of this to heart. We are not the enemy, we are your coworkers. That's why I appreciate what Jim did when he came down here and met with us, would send us. I didn't take it, he just called me up. So if you wanna know why something's happening, call me, I'll tell you why. But in my experience of thirty-plus years of doing this, my biggest fear is liability. If we were gonna remove that snow, because the street right-of-way extends back twenty feet beyond the curb on Ricky Bell and their duplexes, there's nowhere to go with the snow. And somebody would have got, a child would have got hit, not just be getting sued, we also would be splashed all over the news, and I don't think we want that. That's all I ask, I'm sorry for taking up your time, but I had to get it off my chest because it's been bugging me forever.
It's best to do it right here.
So in the future, if you have any questions, call me, and I'll explain to you the why, cuz that's what I do.
And I appreciate that, I don't, it's not my intention to be disrespectful to anybody, but part, part of what I was elected to do was, was to ask questions sometimes. And that's what I did, I sent Michael an email, I didn't, I didn't do, you know, go talk to thirteen different people and, and, and post that everywhere, that's not what happened. So I sent Michael an email, and it was obviously his prerogative to share it with the rest of the board and whoever else he shared it with, but that's, that's my job is to ask questions, so I don't want it to be taken disrespectfully when I ask, I just want, I just want to see a good service being provided and that we're spending dollars the way it should be spent.
And it was, it was a judgment call that was done to try and protect the village's liability, satisfy the customers, and make sure that our staff is being respected for their institutional knowledge. Because I do, we do, as an organization, need to trust them. Everybody in this room that's employed by the village of Weston needs to be trusted that they're doing the best they can.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jim?
Yeah, I just had, so first I, I do wanna thank Michael, Dan, everybody here that, that works in the snow removal and, and Streets Maintenance Department, I think you do really well. And Michael had attached the report, I guess if you will, from a twenty-one, uh, cost analysis of, of what, what the village of Weston does with a dollar versus what the city of Wausau does with a dollar to remove snow, to do, to provide all the same services and EMPD is in the same, same boat. You guys do more with less. Uh, that's admirable, and that's another thing we should have on our website, that stuff should be out there, we should be patting ourselves on the back and each other of, hey, look, we can do this as a community. But, but my huge takeaway from this entire thing goes back to that website and social media and just straight-up communication. And, and I'm not picking on Steve for a minute, he's the duty expert in this room on tents, right? So if you see him putting a tent up, and he's got three stakes per pole all the way around this tent, and you look at him and it's seventy-five degrees in sunshine, and you say to yourself, so, why in the world is Steve pounding three stakes per pole on this tent? And the reason is, is cuz Steve's been pounding tents for a long time, and he knows that on Wednesday or Friday or whatever this weekend, there's heavy weather coming, and he doesn't want his tent to be living in Merrill after this storm, right? Nobody wants to live in Merrill, well. Yeah, okay, so, nobody's gonna question, or they might question Steve, but when his tent is the one that's not blown in Lincoln County, now who's laughing, right? Same kind of a thing, you guys work with these streets every day, you know, hey, mile marker's seventeen, that's a problem. So we need to spend extra time, put extra boots on the ground, and, and all these, cuz it's a rough neighborhood or what, whatever the, the case may be. You're the duty expert in that field, but how great would it be to see that Facebook post that, what's happening in Weston blog that posts daily on our website that isn't there yet, but it will be? It's on a strategic plan where you get there, have it on Nextdoor, we do an awesome job, look at our, our brush removal, right? We have a whole map laid out, and hey, October fourth, we're gonna be in Zone A, and October fifth, we're gonna be in Zone B. If we're three stations ahead, we tell everybody, like, hey, we're, we're two days ahead, but if you still have your stuff out on the day, we're gonna come back and we'll take care of you. Wouldn't it be great to see a blip out there, like, hey, just so you know, we're gonna, you're gonna see the big snow blowers out, and it's because we see these problem areas, we don't want flooding, these are, these are heavy areas. I think that would squelch eighty-five percent of all of your, why is he pounding three stakes? Why is he running the snow blower on March fifteenth?
Good stuff.
I hope he's running at March fifteenth.
Say again?
I hope he isn't running. No, I.
After whatever day it was, right?
I don't.
You've had enough, Mar.
Um, so intellectual property, I mean, you didn't say that, you said.
Institutional knowledge.
Yep, so Tony Skriptak left when? Randy?
Last two, two and a half years.
Two and a half years ago, right?
Two years ago.
I, I, I'm just gonna bring up a point what you said, so in my neighborhood, I got several phone calls from certain residents that live on cul-de-sacs. I called Dan up and I said, I don't know what's going on, but uh, I think, I think you then told me Tony was running those. And uh, Tony was running them backwards. He figured out a way that if he ran these cul-de-sacs backwards, he wouldn't have the, the, you know, what do you call that? That wing roller, that, what do you call it? And, and for some reason, he figured that out, that he somehow had it in the middle and then he could take it off to a side. And I talked to Dan, I, I think he called Tony or something happened or, or told the, the person on the end loader, because he comes to my neighborhood too. And uh, oh, what a win. I mean, I, I'm still getting some calls from that guy back um, by our pump house.
And.
Back in there.
And on that comment, Mark.
But we didn't know.
If we run into something that Tony and I have been friends for a lot of years, I would, I have no problem calling him and he'll be honest. Even though he's retired.
I agree. So just anyway, just a little kudos there. All right, uh, we beat that to death. Uh, forty-nine, strategic plan. What's your pleasure?
I move to adopt the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-five village strategic plan is presented.
By Feeny?
Second.
By Hardinger. Any more on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, so carry. Thank you, Hushain. Uh, fifty. Fifty, um, pay plan and two thousand twenty-three market compensation adjustments.
Was this presented as was recommended from committee?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Um, I guess I debated whether she want consent agenda or or put it under, I, I actually was taking an open session, so it is what it's proposed as came out of committee.
Yes, came right from us.
Yeah, I think um, then the only item to maintain, verify that is when changes would be effective.
Um, can we just move, uh, who's running this? Who's running this thing? You? Okay. So just move it down. You know, you were on directors there for a minute. Uh, and I don't, my computer.
So.
I was sabotaged. No, no, just a minute. Keep on going. All right, keep going. Uh, are we going to actually get to the part where the wages are in there or not?
Yeah.
Increases? Yes, keep going.
The total?
Yep, no, keep going. I, I want to see where they're actually, uh, here we go, here we go. Okay, so stop right there. That's good enough. Right there. Whoa, 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 pick it back up. I'm old. Do I bring it back up? Yep, unless it, are you doing this for the?
Make it larger.
Yeah, yeah, make it uh, bigger there. So I, these are new glasses. I don't like them. Uh, get me somewhere where somebody does not have an increase. Just go, uh, go down. There we go. Right there is fine. So um, help me out here with how to understand this. So let's just look at um, property slash residential inspector. So the two columns to the left are current, correct?
The, what, the first column on the left is their current rate.
Yep.
The second column you'll see there is the market average.
Yep. And then, and then there's a void because there's no increase.
So.
And, and then the proposed is thirty-one fifty-one. What am I, what am I not reading right? I stared at this thing all weekend and I just couldn't come to the number of this. What?
Yeah, the way it, it, it came out.
I, I, it's just so confusing for me and I thought, okay, I'm going to ask, I didn't have time to call today. But I mean, take any one of those and they don't match up. So take, uh, go down to utility technician. Well, boom, no, whoa, whoa, come back. Right there. Stop. Uh, now I lost it.
Second one now.
Second one, yeah, right there.
Uh, oh, there, I'm there. Okay, got it. The same thing. There's a void in that uh, increase column. Yet the wage to the right, which says proposing, you know, proposed new wage is increased. So I, I don't, I don't know if that was done correctly. And I actually think maybe we should have just put the increases in here. It had nothing else in there. Unless, you know, we're trying to make a point or something. So, but I mean, every one of those, you go to a senior operator, same thing.
Everybody that's at zero.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's zero, zero. But.
That's what I kind of come for.
But I see twenty-six ninety-five and I see twenty-nine forty-three, no, excuse me, twenty-nine forty-three twice, zero, zero. Yet it, it's an increase, but yet there's no increase. So I, I just, I, I want to make darn sure we're voting on something that's real. And that uh, unless I'm, that's not, has anyone else seen it? Like, are you, what are you looking at me for? She, she had this question and I thought, oh boy, she knows something here, so.
That's post five percent.
So pre.
This is.
First line is pre-five, the five, five percent increase.
Why, why, why in God's name would we put on pre-five percent?
Oh, it's not. Yeah, so this, this is after five percent.
First column with a dollar amount is that wage that was approved with the five percent increase.
Done.
Right, previously this year.
Okay.
Next column is the
Market average.
Calling the market rate. The addition goes on to the first, that first column that we left. So fifty cents on the thirty-one forty-two is, or thirty?
No.
Two ninety.
No, that's fine. I, I get all the increases. Move down the public work senior operator. Oh, I heard a swear word. And uh, I see twenty-eight oh three. I see market at twenty-four seventy-six. I see nothing in the increase. I see zero for the percentage of increase, yet I see an increase.
Yeah.
So I, I, I'm going to say this and, and I'm, I'm going to drive you all nuts. I want this to come back. But I want it to be paid on March fir-, uh, January first. I have no problem with the increases starting January first, but we have to have a document that is accurate and I don't believe that's accurate.
So I, uh, it isn't? When we went through an H R committee, we were here three hours that night going line by line through every one of these.
Okay.
So this isn't, and I don't know if it was just didn't transmit correctly or what happened, but.
Must have highlighted the wrong column and left it in there.
So we, we went through every line on this item. We were here for hours making sure every one of these were right. So it, it had to have been transmitted.
Formatting error.
Something with the, the format, but that's not correct.
I, I don't want to hold anybody any increase that was voted on by the I just think it'd be so much easier if it would have just been the increases and not this whole, it, it's, to me, it's a mess.
Yeah.
It is just a, a real mess. It's a shame. We just keep stubbing our toes.
Yeah.
And so um, um, I saw some uh, one-time increases there.
Yes, we could probably approve those.
If you want to do that, that's fine. And I think the other one, the real heartburn we have is those uh, C D Ls. Um, I think Michael's holding off on a hire. And I'd have no issue going down and um, I think we're talking down in the uh, I think we're talking of the maintainers. Can you help there? I mean, who are the C D Ls that are having a hard time hiring because we're not even?
The guys don't want to stay because they can go with twenty-five dollars an hour. We lost how many people this year?
Yeah. How many?
Yeah.
How many?
Not this year, but last year is two for sure.
But not last year, not, okay. I, I know. Sometimes you just. Okay, okay. But I mean, uh, I know what, what our company is paying for C D Ls and I know Michael said uh, about seventy-five percent of the time they're actually utilizing the C D L with equipment, you know, sometimes they're not. But um, I, I, I'm seriously, I was shocked.
It's not fun.
And I, I, and I think it's um, what is the range? Twenty-four to twenty-six that's out there? I believe. And, and I, and I think our proposal is twenty-three or twenty-four, right? Wasn't, didn't I see a proposal?
K and below on the.
Yeah, that, that whole letter thing. I'm just, I'm just talking about like straight out, getting a person in here that has a current C D L, has to do all the testing. Uh, you know, for every kind of drug and alcohol. That's the same everywhere. You know, you're, you got the fed med card, the whole bit. And, and I saw, I mean nineteen-ten, nineteen-eight.
It's what our old rate was.
Yeah, that.
Yeah.
Well, you can't hire for that. It's impossible. I, I actually don't understand where you, you even have these. I don't.
They're good kids though.
Yep, I, well, I could pay these good kids forty, forty-five thousand dollars more.
Great.
They want to come up and get a ten thousand hour bonus too. So, so I'll take every one of them.
Though you don't, Mark.
Hmm, I will.
You gotta keep them.
Oh, no, I'll take every one of them.
Your road won't get plowed.
Well, I think where he's got you. I, I actually plowed from my house all the way to my neighbor and I did nothing in my driveway and everybody goes, who is, who's your president? Uh, do you see any out there plowing the street? Okay, pal. So now they're all doing the same thing. Anyway. Okay, so what are we doing?
So I'd like to uh, motion to approve the human uh, resource committee recommendation for the one-time bonuses for financial director of fifteen hundred. Clerk twenty-two fifty, planning and development technician one thousand, deputy clerk, assistant clerk for fifteen hundred for additional duties after departure of utility clerk.
Okay. Uh, that's the motion. Uh, just, uh, you should, do you not want to do the C D Ls here? These low C D Ls?
Well, we, we had a conversation with Michael though.
But it might be a whole nother month.
The pay plan for the.
Pay plan is the plea needs to put something in the paper, like now. And I, we tried to get this done after the last one.
Approved that.
No, we did not. You wanted to wait to go to H R.
Well, we got through the entire plate plan, but we approved the higher at that rate is what my understanding was.
Yeah, I know, but it's inside this.
It is inside this, but this entire scale is wrong.
Yep. So I, I would, I would propose to get that so we can hire those C D Ls. I think we need one or two right now, right?
One, one open.
Uh, and, and I think Michael was hesitant on doing it on a what if and that it would not be approved.
You're right, you're right.
So you, you, you told us to hold off on that and, because we were going to get that done right away?
Yeah.
So why don't we do what you just said, but why don't we take um, and I don't know how that moves up all the rest, but what did I see? Twenty-three? I can't see right.
I'm, I'm looking for it right now.
So, I will, I will second trustee Hardinger so that we can actually get to discussion. Now.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Now, my question is.
Right there.
Can we get this figured out tomorrow? Have a five o'clock special board meeting on Wednesday. Approve this with the correct format and be done with it.
I can come in Wednesday if needed.
I'll call in.
I'm going to be up, and I can call in. I'll be up in.
I'll have to call in.
If it's one agenda item and it's just, I'm fine with that.
If it, if it gets sent out to us, yeah. Uh, I'm going to go on. Twenty-four hours of, maybe twenty-four hours.
So, can, can someone just tell me what the higher rate is for um, a new C D L?
Is it K?
It's uh.
Just, just a number. I don't want to know a letter.
Twenty-three to twenty, with the market rate twenty-six, twenty.
Twenty, twenty-three thirteen was our new minimum. I, 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 I remember.
Yeah, the adjustment of the lower grades. It's going to go to twenty-three thirteen.
So, okay, exactly. I see twenty-three thirteen right there.
Twenty-three thirteen, so going from nineteen-ten to twenty-three thirteen as our minimum hiring. Is that correct? Michael?
Correct, yep.
Okay, so the amendment to my motion would be, is it K or L? Because it doesn't matter.
I would say.
Public Works Maintainer.
I would say.
It's grade H.
Is it H?
H is, H and I, I guess are the maintainer or, yeah, the operator position.
Okay, so the operator.
No, that's not, I mean, it's twenty-three thirteen. That says twenty-two.
Yeah, so twenty-three thirteen is the minimum, going from nineteen-ten to twenty-three thirteen.
So, so twenty-three thirteen was the minimum for the existing staff, just so it wasn't at the bare minimum of the proposed pay grade?
Right. I don't know how you guys work with this.
Yeah, no.
And it's, it's not even laughable. It's, it's very confusing.
I, I thought we had a good handle on this.
Oh, no, me, I, yeah, I'm sorry. I sat here for hours going through this. Now it's, I don't know what, what's, what's frustrating.
So let's move forward.
What do we need for minimum hiring rate?
One-time bonuses and we're doing uh, twenty-three thirteen, correct?
We do that?
Can we get that done right now? Yes, all right. And the motion is uh, Hardinger, second by Feeny. Any more in the discussion? Pam, do you have this?
I do.
Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry.
Are we, are we going to get this out for Wednesday?
Yeah, Wednesday at five, five fifteen. I can be there. Steve, you can be there.
I can do Thursday. Um, Wednesday I'm going to be up in Michigan.
Okay.
I, I'd have to call in.
And I'm going to call in too.
And, and, and Jamie.
Hushain, are you saying something? Yeah, Hushain, what?
Mark, I won't be available Wednesday. I won't be available.
Will or will?
How, how about Thursday? Can you give us a little more time? Thursday, are you available Thursday?
I can call.
No.
Uh, a call in? No? Okay.
I, I can.
If we can get a quorum to call in, let's just try Thursday. Pam, you'll notice us?
Well, I can make it in if it, Thursday.
Or, or even make it in, but that's fine.
What time did you want it?
Five o'clock. I'm, I'm good with five on Thursday.
Are we calling in or coming?
Um, either one, your choice. Yeah.
Well.
As, as long as you come in, bring treats. Yeah, okay.
Well, if everybody's calling, then I just call it.
Just call in. Let's just do a call in if that's legal. Yep.
It should.
All right, so fifty is done. Fifty-one, proposals for evaluation of job descriptions for directors and, and deputy directors. That's what we're putting out for um, that part.
So I received two proposals, one from Public Administration Associates and one from Carlson Detman.
Carlson Detman is the recommendation from Nikki Dirks.
Well, that's the one that she works with. That's, we worked with in our original pay plan. And that one was uh, it's the Carlson Detman proposal was for fifteen thousand five hundred dollars. The uh, one from Public Administration Associates was um, nine thousand seven, just under ten thousand dollars. Um, actually, the scope of the work this proposed by Public Administration Associates may be a little bit more complete in terms of review of the plan and so forth, but um, you know, Carlson Detman.
Did, did we run this through, did we run both of these agencies through H R?
Yes, they, they were recommended by the H R committee.
And, and either one is signed with them?
At what, they're split fifty-fifty on who would do they use and how often they use them. So really, for what we're trying to get out of them, I, I think the uh, we'll be fine with the, the, the lower bid. My recommendation.
In normal circumstances, that's where I'd go too, but I heard Carlson Detman.
There.
From several of the H R professionals, so.
But I mean, if we're going to do like a full-scale thing, I think it would probably be a larger thing that we'd want to go after. Right, but it's, it's.
Is this not full, full scale?
Well, it is pretty much what, what would be done for a full-scale review, except for, it's just for select positions.
Exactly.
So, um.
Where, um, so I've heard of the Carl, where is the, this professional group that are administrators? Where's that from?
Public Administration Associates are based in Wisconsin also, um. That's the firm that you're, you um, probably are familiar with Dwayne Gao that is affiliated with that firm.
Uh, as an actual owner?
No.
Oh. What do you mean by affiliated?
Well, he works as a contract employee for them. Um. Do you want to refer this back to the H R committee for their recommendation?
If they said, well, uh, I'm going to just go tell you right now, I'm, I would go for Carlson Detman. So that's the way I'll be voting.
So in either case, they're probably, they're talking about a ninety-day, give or take process to get this completed. So we're looking about July.
Forty.
Starting April here.
Yeah.
Okay. And they both. Um, so Dwayne Gao is not the administrator for Coroner anymore, correct?
Right.
And um, he has a hard time, hard time uh, making it to committees that he's assigned to. And if he's associated with that company, I would go with the other one. And I said it. So, we can, what's your pleasure?
Where, where are the bids? I'm sorry. Try to find them again.
Eighteen to nine.
I didn't, I did not have them for the packet. So, um. Again, if you'd like to refer them to the committee, we can certainly take it back there.
You know, so the, the committee didn't see the, the numbers?
No.
Well, then it should go to the committee.
Because they, no, we, because we directed the staff to.
It should go to the committee then.
They, yeah.
If they haven't seen the number.
Well, and, and the thing, I think the other thing we should take into consideration is these are H R professional firms that use.
These are, these are people way past our, our level here. So these are, these are some, some big guns. We're very, very fortunate. I'm on our committee. We need one or two more, but.
I, I personally heard Carlson Detman thrown out numerous times.
Yeah.
In the three hours I was here.
Yep, I'm sorry.
What's your pleasure?
So what's, what's, I don't, Carlson Detman is at what?
Thirteen thousand five hundred.
Oh, thirteen.
Thirteen, yeah.
Ooh, it's way different.
Yeah, that's, there's a huge difference between the two of them.
I'm entertaining a motion.
And Carlson was the lower one?
No, Carlson was the higher one.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to go with, with not Carlson Detman because prices, that's quite a difference to me. And I don't think there's going to be that much difference in what they're going to be doing. I mean, um, what was the name of that company again?
Public Administration.
Public Administration.
I'll second. Motion by Armline, second by Feeny. Any more on the discussion? Um, all those in favor, um, say aye.
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 All those opposed, no. And uh ayes, carries. Probably working with Dean, wow, that'd be awesome. Alright, yeah, he works for the company. Yeah, he does, that'd be awesome, he'd do a great job. Um, let's see, about um fifty two, administrator, did we miss anything here? Forty seven. Nope, and forty eight? Fifty three, okay, got it.
You're right.
I I'm just staying with um my notice here, so.
Administrator recruitment, is that what?
Yep, yeah, so fifty two, administrator recruitment announcement.
I have two uh quick things right off the bat. Um, one of, so in paragraph four, there shouldn't be a hyphen between sought out. The other one is that in the same paragraph, Weston has a widely and there's nothing. So just want to uh address that real quick.
Did did we not take this right from uh Portage or something, or? Or what?
It was a modification of one that fell there for Coroner.
Okay.
I played around with uh Canba as was kinda talked about by the committee, so I got a revised version of this. Care to see, I can move, I can share it by email and I guess it's just gonna go on a website, probably to the league municipalities. And then we'll refer them back to information on our own website for the recruitment ad, so.
So that in that ad is, that ad is ducked till um self point, but but did I not see something here? Weren't we talking about, we're gonna use um?
Yeah, well, I think it was Portage.
Was it Portage?
It was Portage.
Well, that was an example.
I thought HR.
We we had a, we had a packet that we looked at and our request was to have something integrating that packet with our information and updating it off the edits that we had during our meeting, which I'm not saying here. So I don't know if this.
The only place you'll see the 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 pictures would then be on our website.
But but you you just, you just brought up. You just brought up that we're gonna use Cornell Waders. And and.
That was an initial template, but it's gonna be more like the one we have right here.
Yeah, I I think we, okay.
No, well, and I guess my understanding of of that direction was that we were gonna take the firm we said we had here, integrated in the same type of platform that Portage had, so we had a document to look at and we're doing approve tonight. Was was my understanding of that meaning.
Yep, my understanding too.
So I.
I I I never heard Cornell Waders, so I don't know where that's coming from. So where are we? Are we moving forward? Are we gonna?
I, this is what, this is not what I was looking for.
Alright, so we're gonna bring this back?
Yeah.
Fifty fifty three, uh consideration of participation July fourth, area community fireworks show. And Jim, uh you've got fifty three noted. Um, let's see, and I also did read Scott Berger's during public comment. And this will be held at the Wassa Airport, yep, as a community wide.
Yeah, yes.
I was told that Safer, that apparently Weston's gonna have some viewing area. I don't know if it was on Target or.
True, that they had picked out Target, one other spot night. I mean, I have a little experience with fireworks, I used to shoot fireworks off and in my opinion, that one community that's probably gonna be a little bit of disadvantageous is is Weston. I mean, they're they're using, I was told three and six inch fireworks, which are not that big of fireworks, especially threes, those are pretty small actually. Um, so, I mean, I think the village will be able to see them, but they're gonna have, out of all those communities, they're gonna have a fairly minimal.
Yeah, but I mean, the you get out of the house and get over there and and set up a couple lawn chairs and I'm sure there'll be some food trucks.
We're talking about. Agreed, that those are, I had is I I agree with Chief Pinky here that I don't know that. Kennedy Park or or Target, you'll be able to see a lot. Um, but perhaps this is something where especially where Tourism Commission gets involved, that maybe this doesn't have to live at the Wassa Airport every year, there's five communities involved. Cool, so Rid Mountain has it next year and Chel is it year after, and we can move this around, doesn't have to just live in Marathon Park.
Do we have a space to move it around too?
Yeah, I mean, the the original plan is they wanted to light the fireworks off from the top of Rid Mountain, which I said no to, just because of obvious safety concerns. Um, Rid Mountain doesn't have any real good areas otherwise to light them off. Um, you know, they talked about Blue Gill Bay, which you could light them off from there, but there's just no room for anybody to park there or anything. Um, I think the village has some areas, like I think Kennedy Park would be a reasonable spot from my standpoint anyway to light them off. I mean, obviously, it ends up to some other people here too, but from a from a fire standpoint, Kennedy Park would be a decent spot to light them off at.
Sean would probably disagree.
Except for when, but but I mean, so the.
We 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 did them for years with Weston Festive Fireworks.
Yeah, so I thought too.
Um, we only had one unfortunate, with the east wind and air into the pool, which.
Yeah.
Which delayed our opening by at least an hour because we were cleaning the pool up from like seven or eight o'clock. Till noon.
So Wassa J C's was a real mess because they had all those old buildings behind there by the train tracks and stuff. That that got a little hairy there on some of those hot nights, so.
Is is there a plan to do something different at Marathon Park again since you showed up? Cause then I I read Katie's email and she alluded to the fact that the only reason they weren't doing it today is there was some construction going on. And that it may, may or may not go back to, I I don't know.
Back to where?
Marathon Park, just when I read her email earlier today, that's what I took out.
Yeah, I I see what you mean. Well, J C's just.
It sounded like, like, oh, this is a, this is a one year. And that's why, I guess that's why I'm asking.
Well, I think it's a one year, let's let's see how it goes and then if it's to be, go ahead, Hussein.
The Marathon Park has a plan to redo the whole park practically and rebuild it. And that project is ongoing and so that's what they're talking about. And they probably start this summer and they're not gonna do all of it at one time, they're gonna just do part of that kind of a phase of the project. And they wanna create a location for children, they want a location of water fountain. And also, they wanna add three more pickleball court for Badger State game. And so I'm not sure what they're doing in camping area, but there is a big plan in there, yeah.
Yeah, it's part, they're redesigning it right now, a multi-year process to revamp Marathon Park.
Okay, the only reason I ask, if it's a one-time thing, I'm fine finding, I'm I'm fine funding it through ARPA, but if it's gonna be an ongoing thing.
Yeah, right.
Look at Arpa with funding or something.
Yeah, so we're talking thirty five hundred dollars is the ask. And we we could go to tourism too.
Yeah, I would prefer to go to tourism.
I think that's, yeah, I'm sorry.
So I would recommend using the villages tourism ones. Last year, we had over a hundred thousand dollars, so definitely.
At the room.
That part, so it doesn't, it's actually a tourism commission, that that portion is the villages' control.
Yeah, okay, so we could do that.
Good idea.
Cause I mean, why not hold, ARPA's a little bit more restricted than this is, so, okay.
And I guess my other recommendation would be if we're gonna be doing this for a few years, that you're right, we should check to see if we could do it in different areas.
Yeah.
Because I know I won't.
Real hitting basis. But but if you get over there, you know, and and I, you know, for thirty five hundred bucks to join other communities?
Yeah.
And be part of something?
Yeah.
Maybe start something.
The thirty five hundred dollars is worth it, so, yeah. John, did you have something to say?
I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, sorry. Uh, Chief Schultz uh wanted me to call in you several times during the night and I haven't been doing that, so just teasing you right there, so. Um, so let's let's move ahead here, motion by.
Thirty five hundred dollars from the Village of Weston's Tourism Council.
By Cronin?
Second.
Second by Feeny on the question, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 So carry, thank you all. Budget challenges, meeting with local officials and state legislators, legislators.
So as I mentioned in my, in the report for this, uh mayor and a couple of other local administrators were uh talking about some of the upcoming budget challenges, there's certainly, or there's currently talk about the state budget surplus from sales tax collections and possibly using that for additional shared revenue for municipalities. Um, so the thought was to uh have a listening session with elected legislators at a local uh location, uh kinda suggested a McDevco um facility out west of Wassa, as possible, as the possible location, kind of a neutral site, if you will, and uh whether we would be uh supportive of having some kind of a session with local legislators. Um, you know, we are, we have talked also about uh public safety referendum potentially coming up. Schofield recently had a finance committee meeting and talked about um creating even a task force to look at what some of the uh talking points might be and, you know, the the justification rationale and so forth. Um, we are gonna be, I I think we're gonna be like a lot of municipalities that, you know, with their the the uh net new growth formula for increasing uh collections from property taxes isn't keeping up with the needs. I think that's something that was born out or is mentioned in the uh document I attached from the league. League has a lot of other articles and there are recent publications about this, so, you know, Jessica touched on it as well at budget time last year. So, um I guess my approaching legislators as a appointed official is not nearly as meaningful or impactful to, you know, elected officials as it would be from from uh from from those who would sit on the elect. So I think that's one of the benefits we've been given from from a league, so. Um, there's also a possibility to give it out the resolution, I guess, just to reinforce our position on it as well. I don't know what, you know, we, know what efforts you want to support or or um pursue in this case. I just wanna get it out there for discussion at this stage.
Yes, I think we absolutely uh should um work with or uh try to have a listening session with our uh state representatives and with our municipal and with our municipal colleagues across the, across the area. Uh, we're hurting and, you know, if we we only have a couple of years left until we have to make some really hard decisions about our service, uh the service level that we provide to munis, to our residents. So I think that we need to do this uh as quickly as we can in an orderly fashion. And we passed a couple resolutions uh last year addressing or directing our states, uh representatives uh on a certain, on a few things, I think that another one uh on something that affects all of us is totally appropriate.
I I I I I don't think a resolution is anything. And for me, I think it's absolute waste of time and it's face to face, it's uh uh phone calling, not texting, not emailing, doesn't matter. And uh I've been going on the state capital for the last thirty five years with the grocery association and and we have meetings with the the people and I'll I'll tell you, we we can get some stuff done. And I mean, we probably can't do it alone as a village, but collectively across the state, we can get some things done. And um so if there's, if there's things out there or if you're receiving stuff, Jessica, Keith or Jen and and you want me to go or we can go together, I'd be glad to go, so. And it's a beautiful capital building, by the way, so it's one of the prettiest in the country, I'll tell you that. There's some really good restaurants down there, so. Anyway, enough of that. So I don't, were you looking for something or just uh info?
Well, just as that discussion comes up about setting up this meeting.
Yep.
Just uh indicate that we'll be uh supporting.
Yep.
But participate.
You know, if we think we could actually gather some to come here and put something on, or maybe put something on with other areas, all the same place, I think we should. If we if we can, if we can entice them here, then food is a good enticement, maybe it'd have to be a dale's, maybe it has to be uh some different beverages, I don't know. So.
I can offer up our.
Yeah, yeah, this place or another place.
I would, I would, I would, why not have it here?
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
Right here.
Yep, so, yeah, okay. Alright, so move forward on that. Uh fifty five, two thousand twenty three, two thousand twenty four assessor contract. Uh Jim, I've got you noted uh that you wanna talk about that and then also, um Pam, you know, you told me this two hours ago. So I circled it and I checked it, uh the amount's different and.
On 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 the contract itself, on paragraph six, the annual amount was incorrect in the agenda.
Okay.
And the the papers I handed out.
Oh, okay, so everybody got these papers, so uh the impact is thirty seven thousand eight hundred or nine thousand four hundred and fifty quarterly. Okay, those are the correct numbers.
Same as last year.
Yep, oh, okay, there you go.
Yeah, rate hasn't gone up.
So what's your pleasure?
A motion to approve the renewal contract with Greg Schmidt of the year twenty twenty three.
Second by Ermling, second by Hardinger on the discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 What? Oh, I'm sorry, Jim, did you wanna talk? No, it's fine, fine, darn it. And I have it right here, yep, uh I'm I apologize, darn it.
Oh, I'd like to hear what is concerning to you.
No, uh we're right in the middle of it though, so we're we, it's done, it's him, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so I was just curious, I I mean, I think Greg does a nice job, he's available, he's nice to work with. Um, but I was just wondering why, and again, this is probably a website question, uh maybe Pam can can shed some light on this, but the village of Weston is the only one of our local municipalities that doesn't have our assessments online. So any real estate agent that tries to sell something, buy something, if I go to pull a permit to build a shed, I don't know how many square feet my house is that's on record at the village of Weston, I have to physically come here and you go on your little filing cabinet and you pull it out and you find, oh yeah, it's one thousand two hundred and fifteen square feet. And then I have to do the math if I can have sixty percent of that for an accessory structure.
That was a previous board's decision and I think that stemmed all the way back to when Dean was here, actually. Um, and it's just never been brought up before, so at, yeah. So at one point, when that first became available, the board at the time didn't want it available for the public just to have anybody looking at it from home, so things have changed now, that I mean, that was ten, fifteen years ago. So I think it's just that it's never been brought up again.
It 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 may have been uh the the, at the time administrator, but probably more the president. Um, I would say Vilas had a big hand in that. He had a lot of property in the area, probably didn't want it that way.
I mean, it's all public record. You guys all have a lot of stuff to do, so if you don't have to, if I think I would hook up this square footage of my house, so I can.
Well, are are we talking about two different things? Because Greg told us that I thought Rid Mountain was the only one that is finished. However, he said it, remember how he was just so, and and. What?
The reassessment.
Yeah, but it's something else, it's all digital and it was a hundred and twenty grand and yeah, we wanna do it, but not yet now, right?
Yeah, they've digitized everything.
And and they're they're the only one, and when you said everyone but us, I thought, whoa, whoa, it's a whole other level, right?
I worked at Schofield, so Schofield has, they have, they're contracted with the city of Wassa, and when you go on their assessor website, you can pull up a property and it shows the footprint of the building, and I think that's what you're talking about.
Correct, yeah, so it'll show you the floor plan, the same thing that was on the three by five file card that you pulled out, the the thing. And it shows, hey, there's three bedrooms and two bathrooms and a forced air, so a gas furnace and.
T C win, so it's all.
Is this, is this something that?
We have marketplace, market job.
Yeah, it's.
And it used to be T C win or something, it's a long time ago.
But what Jim is saying is that that, all that data is available at your fingertips on the website.
Right, and that's just back, that stems way back to previous administrations, never ever putting it out there and not coming up again.
So do we have that? We just have to put the switch turn on? Is this something different we have to have Greg do, or is this like?
I think we just have to talk with him.
Yeah.
To get it so that it's available up there. I think you guys ha, I mean, I I don't ask it, but I think you guys.
Somewhat complex, cause like when Schofield had, um, so I was with Schofield until last year and then um they only got that through, Wassa only put that available online for Schofield for sure. Just like a year or two before I left.
Sure.
So I know it's, it it's real, it involves a lot to get it to that point, but we can ask Greg.
Yeah, let's let's pursue that.
Let's bring it for next month's agenda.
No, that's a good question. So, and the contract is approved? Alrights.
Yes.
Thank you, and that completes your questions, Jim. I'm gonna check off this uh little deal here, I put a happy face on there. Fifty six, Schofield Avenue, Normandy to Birch reconstruction timeline. Ben?
One more time, please.
Uh Schofield.
I can.
No, 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 Dan's here, you don't, you just go on vacation, go to go to Mickey Mouse, Normandy to Birch reconstruction timeline.
This actually came from the Public Works Committee.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that there should be effort started at least design, the Schofield Avenue reconstruction, which is in the ten two project plan. Like in the project plan, there was a statement about not constructing prior to twenty twenty five, but we need to be prepared for that. And I know that trustee Zagami is particularly concerned that we should be, you know, possibly even considering doing it sooner just because of the condition of some of the joints, so I don't like putting words in anybody's mouth here. Um, I don't know, Hussein, if you wanna uh add anything on that discussion?
Yes. Uh, we are spending hundred fifty to two hundred thousand dollars for maintenance of that road. And I think that's wasting our money. So we should start designing it and when the time comes, twenty four, twenty five, do the construction. And we should take a look at it, if you wanna go with the concrete or a blacktop. I know that has to be designed and engineer should compare the cost and then make a recommendation. I know that has to be designed and engineer should compare the cost and then make a recommendation. Because in my opinion, blacktop is easier to maintain and is more economical. So that's what I asked him to start working on it, and I think that's a main road in our community. And it shouldn't be like that. I think, uh, if we want to develop that road more, around that road more, I think we should have a good road in that, in the river.
So, Husheng.
Yes, sir.
You, you had, uh, fi- figures of a hundred to two hundred thousand, I, I guess I remember a year or two ago of like eighty or ninety thousand? But that's really not the big one, the big one is I thought you were proponent for cement or concrete, and now you're actually seeing blacktops?
Well, I'm saying they should study to see which one is more economical, the reason I'm saying blacktop, because blacktop is easier to maintain and is more economical than a concrete.
And smoother. I mean, I, I like the ride on black, blacktop, yeah, uh, Dan's got his hand up here, so just, just a second here, Husheng.
Just so you know, the con, Husheng, we talked about this, I, well, I didn't go into depth on it on Public Works. Contract for concrete repair this year on Schofield Avenue is gonna be basically from, from, uh, County Highway X running out to Mesker.
Wait, wait, next term, okay.
Yeah, okay, Schofield Avenue, last year we worked, uh, year before we did from Birch through there. The goal is from Normandy out to Birch, we will do maintenance in-house, meaning that as the concrete joints deteriorate, instead of doing concrete repair there, since it's so expensive, we will do, take the joint out that's bad as needed, replace it with asphalt for the time being, we did that a lot out on Highway fifty-one when I was with the county. The problem is it's the expense of patching with concrete. So what Michael's goal was, and I apologize, he's working with the TID stuff, but the goal was with Husheng was from Normandy out to Birch would be eventually reconstructed, and that's what he's after with the TID money.
Yep.
So for maintenance work, it's concrete repair out to the east for the this year.
Okay. All right, and this is an info only, correct? Yep, just a timeline?
Yeah, so I, I guess the one thing is, we would, uh, we would look at then getting an RFP out for design services, you know, here in April, early May, and then I guess ask the board then to start the design, you know, some of the, that pavement analysis. Um, so that, that could get started in twenty-three, and then twenty-four, the road can get designed so that in spring of twenty-five, you know, we'd have it bid out and ready to go right away in twenty-five. So I guess, just wanted to go over that timeline with the board to make sure everybody was in agreement with that, um, as we look at getting that design together.
What's the timeline on, um, on Ross Ave, and then Business fifty-one, can you refresh your memories?
Yeah, so Ross Avenue is, um, slated as a twenty twenty-seven reconstruct from Metro Drive to Alderson Street. And then Business fifty-one is a twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, uh, currently. So we, we didn't wanna have, I guess, everything under construction at the same time. Uh, I know that was a, a concern of Husheng's as well, was, you know, we didn't wanna make it so it was impossible for residents to get around our community, so, um. So yeah, so if we, if we reconstructed this in twenty-five, then Business fifty-one and twenty-six, um, it, it would work without having major, you know, multiple major corridors under construction at the same time.
And Metro and to Alderson would be, uh, with Robert Wells, correct?
Correct, yeah, and it's a joint project with Schofield.
Yep, okay.
So essentially, it's twenty-five, or we'd have to wait till twenty-eight?
Probably, yeah, or we would just have two projects, it, it would be a messy summer, one of those other years.
Because, uh, Marathon Con is gonna do all the bridge approach on Cam Phillips. And Highway Department gonna do the ramp and part of twenty-nine, and also Business fifty-one in twenty-seven. So I think we should do some of our project before DOG start ripping up any road around us. And that helps the community and the people to move around more comfortable.
Okay.
Well, the Utility Committee was concerned about getting the design for Schofield Avenue in the TIF area, because that closing is coming close, but the expenditure deadline is even closer, and if we, if we don't get going on it, we're gonna, could find ourselves, if there's any hiccup, that we are, you know.
Starting at the design phase, I mean, just because the design sticks so long.
The center, yeah, the center, the better.
Right.
And we know where to have to do it.
Right.
Okay.
So then, I'll, uh, I'll move that, uh, we request proposals, uh, so that design can begin in twenty twenty-three with the goal of reconstruction, with the goal of reconstruction in twenty twenty-five.
So, um, motion by Feeny, second by Cronin, any more in discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, so carried. All right, um, moving into closed session. And I think we've gotta say goodbye, Husheng. For closed session, correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So Husheng, have, have a good night.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Mister President, I move to enter into closed session for Wisconsin statute nineteen eighty-one, parent one, parent E. Thank you, John. Deliberating or negotiating and purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting of their specified public business where.
Thank you, Randy.
Wherever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session to wit, lease with octagon towers, and also under the same, uh, under the same nineteen eighty-five, parent one, parent E, the Lamar billboard agreement.
Um, world call, yeah.
Well, he did the motion, so he did a second.
Yep.
Okay, I'm sorry, didn't hear that.
No, it's okay, I was slowly crying inside.
You said it, not me.
I just got it in for you tonight. Um, Maloney?
Aye.
Ermeling?
Aye.
Cronin?
Aye.
Feeny?
Aye.
Hardinger?
Aye.
Violent is excused and Zagami is.
Is off, yep, rest in all states.
Aaron, you gotta kill our.